Nationally, so when I have an opportunity to introduce a new police officer, it should be well known that that individual was vetted very thoroughly to make sure that they were the right person for this community. And so every time I come up here to introduce new police officer, I want you to know that we we take that very seriously for our organization and this community as well. But tonight, I'm excited to introduce Officer Timothy Wilson. Timothy, if you can come up. Not sure if he wants to go by Timothy throughout his whole career, but for tonight, we'll call him Tim Timothy either way. Tim grew up in Sacramento, moving here from Roseville, California. Prior to beginning his law enforcement career, Tim worked as a refuse truck driver for 17 years with the city of Roseville. He graduated from the Delta College Police Academy in 2023 and worked for the Stockton Police Department before joining us here at AGPD. Tim is pursuing his advanced education and is scheduled to graduate this spring with a degree in public science. He is a purple belt in Brazilian Jiu-Jitsu and looks forward to furthering his training through the department's Jiu-Jitsu program. He is excited to work for a city, in his own words, that prioritizes customer service in a department where people are happy in their career. Tim enjoys spending time with his wife Holly and daughter Ariel. In his free time, he enjoys hiking, playing disc golf, and caring for his two dogs and four reptiles. Tim is excited about the big move to AG and is looking forward to the milder weather, proximity to the beach, and just that overall small town feel. Before we begin the swearing in ceremony, I want to provide Tim with a welcome packet and a letter from me describing my expectations of what it means to be in a Royal Grande Police Officer, and I'll give you this just after you're swearing in. Here with us tonight is his wife Holly, who will be pinning his badge during our ceremony.
We can stand if you want to stand right here. Okay, raise your right hand. I state your name.
Hi, Timothy Wilson.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support and defend.
I will support and defend.
The Constitution of the United States.
Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
The Constitution of the State of California.
Against all enemies, foreign and domestic.
Against all enemies, foreign and domestic.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance.
To the Constitution of the United States.
To the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
The Constitution of the State of California.
That I take this obligation freely.
That I take this obligation freely.
Without any mental reservation.
Without any mental reservation.
Or purpose of evasion.
Or purpose of evasion.
And that I will well and faithfully discharge.
That I will well and faithfully discharge.
The duties upon which I am about to enter.
Duties upon which I'm about to enter.
Congratulations.
Congratulations, sir. Here's your expectations.
All right, thanks Chief. Would you like to say anything? Since you're still there.
I tried to get away. I just wanted to thank Chief and everyone else in the department instrumental in providing me this opportunity to work in the city. The reason I chose to accept this position is because everyone in the department was so welcoming and everyone in the city seemed so happy to be here. Now I'm one of those people. I'm thankful. Thank you.
Welcome. And as we did with the other, would anyone like to speak on this item? And let's check in online.
If any members of the public on Zoom would like to make a comment, please raise your hand. There are no raised hands.
All right, so we'll close public comments. Thank you so much for all our members of Public Safety. Thanks for what you do every single day. Thanks to our new people. We'll see you soon. All right, that takes us to item 6C, SlowCog presentation, and it says Downing here, so I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Downing to do some more introductions.
Yes, thank you Mayor. This this item this evening is a little different for us. We don't typically have a staff report and all of that on our special presentations. However, this is a special presentation by SlowCog regarding their roadmap to transportation independence, and so I'll turn it over to SlowCog. What the new Deputy Director of SlowCog, James Worthley. Am I here or am I over there?
Right where you are.
Okay. Good evening. I am James Worthley, the Deputy Director of SlowCog, the San Luis Obispo Council of Governments, and I want to encourage your listening audience to go to our website, www.localsroadsfirst.com, that provides more information on this and the full draft investment plan if they want to take a look at it themselves. Now, SlowCog is your regional transportation planning agency. It's comprised of all seven cities and the county. We have 12 elected board members with Mayor Pro Tem got three sitting to represent a Royal Grande as well as all five supervisors and one member from every city. We improve transportation by allocating state and federal funds, and we plan for a future that is a total population adding over 40,000 new people to our region in the next few decades. The purpose of this presentation The purpose of this presentation is that transportation funding has fallen short. It's not going to be fixed by the state or federal level. We need new stable local funds to address the transportation needs of our presence and future, or we will continue down the current pothole path we've been on for decades. Looking at our long-range transportation plan that we adopted in two thousand and twenty-three, we found all investment areas have shortfalls that cannot be met with local, state, or federal funding that's available currently. The shortfall's already begun. Every year, we fall further behind. Some are going to ask, why is there a shortfall? Let's talk about the gas tax. In the seventies, eighties, and nineties, more cars, more people, and more travel and more gallons consumed, which meant more revenues to fix our roads and improve them. In the last two decades, we've seen more hybrids, fuel efficiencies, conservation, and more recently, electric vehicles. Cars are traveling further, paying less in fuel tax, or nothing at all. This is not a blip, but a downward trend that's going to continue. In two thousand and twenty-three alone, in California, twenty-five percent of all new vehicles purchased were electric vehicles. Okay, let's hit some of the misperceptions that are out there. Many people say the gas tax will fix our roads or should fix our roads. There's just not enough money. It hasn't in the past twenty years. It's not going to fix it going forward. The gas tax goes up by law every year based on inflation. That's not going to catch us up. We're so far behind already. The state is not going to reprioritize its funds to our small area or any areas in the state. Local funding might be reprioritized to roads. That's up to the city council and the members that sit up here on the dais every two, four years, eight years, when the CIP comes up and you decide where your priorities go. Caltrans will fund one-on-one improvements. That's what expectations are, but the reality is twice in more than twenty-five years, we've received grants that does a fix on one-on-one. Twenty-five years ago, we received a grant requested grade widen. That was about fifty million dollars. Now, more recently, we received a grant for the Shell Beach Straits, a short section southbound only, part-time to fix a couple of miles. We can't wait twenty-five more years for the next one to come. Electric vehicles pay an average amount for road repairs. As they go in theory, no, it's not even close. And the state's going to change something. You can fill in many blanks here that somebody's hoping for, but they're not going to fix it the way we need it fixed in the time we can get it done. Can't really tell which side the slide needs to be, but okay, let's talk road maintenance. The lower the index, the worse the average road and more costs to keep up with the status quo. Arroyo Grande is here in the bottom half. And actually, Grover Beach just passed you this year. They're up at the high fifties now, so bottom two. Your local measures are doing well, but there needs to be more than what you're able to invest in right now. It's difficult to hold that status quo with available funding, and it's only going to cost more and more each year as that level either even staying the same. It's going to cost more because cost of materials and inflation and work is going to go up as well. Other areas in the county are equally as bad or struggling as well. So highway congestion. Everybody in South County is familiar with the Shell Beach Straits and the issue there. At North County, they're starting to see more and more problems. It hasn't hit the levels yet that has in the South County, but peak hour is surpassing that peak hour in the South County now. North County has no funding available for one-on-one fixes for construction. It's ten years behind if there's funding available now. If there's not funding available soon, it's going to be decades before we get to that fix, just like it's been decades to get to something on the Shell Beach Straits. Now, eighty-nine percent of Californians live in a county that has a special transportation tax. Each one of these counties have taxed their citizens based on their voters a half cent or more to for improvements just for transportation. Our neighbors on the Central Coast all have this transportation-specific tax. Our neighbors are spending twenty-five, thirty-five, and fifty million dollars every year on top of their federal and state allotments for transportation improvements. Monterey County alone spends twelve million dollars from their sales tax just for their maintenance of roads. We don't have that. We're only behind, and we're not going to be able to catch up. To be clear, we didn't lose out on thirty million dollars when Measure J in two thousand and sixteen didn't pass. We didn't lose out on two hundred and ten million dollars when it didn't pass over the last seven years. We've lost out on over four hundred million dollars when you look at what it could have collected and could have leveraged back from Sacramento is what we've lost out on. Okay, there are drawbacks to a sales tax. There's a cost. A half-cent sales tax costs fifty cents for every hundred-dollar sales taxable purchase. But remember, there's no tax on housing or utilities or prescriptions or groceries or services for the median income that costs about two dollars and thirty cents or a hundred and twenty dollars per year, two dollars thirty cents per week, or about a hundred and twenty dollars per year over each year for the median income. Now, if approved by voters, a half-cent sales tax would reclaim nearly one million dollars out of Sacramento every year by formula. That comes to our region. We're ineligible to get that currently. It would raise thirty-five million dollars a year just in sales tax alone. It would be protected from Sacramento. It would speed up project delivery, reducing costs. It would guarantee that every penny stays and goes for transportation purposes in our region and contains multiple safeguards like accountability, oversight, annual reporting, and a sunset date twenty years out, as well as a one percent maximum for SlowCog administration. And finally, our tourists region-wide, no matter where they go, would be helping to pay for our transportation systems all through our county. Okay, let's look at the plan. Right now, it's in draft form. Changes are expected. With your feedback, we can tailor this to meet your city's transportation needs. The sales tax will be collected region-wide, aiming at fair and understandable. We distributed it based on population. So at the last SlowCog board meeting, we identified four subregions: North County, North Coast, South County, and Central County. There are populations in the South County. Twenty-nine percent of the people live in the South County area. Therefore, twenty-five, sorry, twenty-nine percent of the money would go to the South County area, and that would be restricted. There's one additional tweak to that population basis, and that's adding three million dollars to the levels for the four smallest cities, including Arroyo Grande, to bump you up just a marginal share there. Okay, we're going to talk about the South County, I promise, but I want to give you the full picture. In the North Coast, there's every community and the cities and the amount of money that's guaranteed the North Coast. In the North Coast area, as well as the Central County area, you see more of a balance between regional road safety and mobility for all. In the North County section, as well as the South County section, you see that switch a little bit. There's a higher percentage, higher dollar amount for regional road safety than mobility for all in the regional component of that. But throughout, what you see is sixty-six percent is going to the local projects, distributed go to the South County, distributed among the three cities down in South County, as well as the two larger unincorporated communities, and then other unincorporated county areas as well, has a population share as well for local projects, and then thirty-four percent for regional projects. So the local area investments for Arroyo Grande amounts to thirty-three million dollars, distributed now with twenty-nine million dollars to road repairs and four million dollars for community road safety or congestion improvements, including safe routes to school and public transit for seniors, persons with disabilities, and veterans. This is what we're asking you to do tonight. How to fix this? How to make it better? How to tailor this to your needs? And I know you're thinking thirty-three million dollars isn't enough. And I'm not going to argue with you. There's more. There's regional improvements. Again, fifty million dollars is slated to the South County for one-on-one improvements and parallel route improvements as well. It's not just on one-on-one. It's not just interchanges. It might be off community route. It could be West Branch Street, et cetera. And then there's another seventeen million dollars in the South County, again, for public transit, seniors, persons with disabilities, and veterans, as well as active transportation for bicycle and pedestrian improvements. All this money now can be captured by the South County, if not captured by the city of Arroyo Grande. It's to be determined still. But that's not all. There's still more of a funds that's available because we can use a lot of these funds that are for safe routes to school, for active transportation, for one-on-one improvements by leveraging state funds. Two, three, four times, we can get back. Safe Route School can get back nine times the amount you put in. We can get more money out of grants from the state by having more money to offer up as match. It's called leveraging. Okay, so the ask today is to review your city section and approve on it together with your local measures. Local Roads First is how SlowCog can help deliver your needed improvements, whether it's safety, road repair, or large infrastructure projects. If in a, the SlowCog Board approves a final investment plan, it will come back to you for your decision to approve the investment plan or deny it. Lastly, when going after grant funds, it's important to show the state that we're not just a begging agency, begging for funds, that we're actively trying to meet our local needs, and locally, we're pursuing all possibilities. This is one of them. That concludes the presentation. I'm happy to answer questions.
All right, I'm sure we have them. So let's check in with the council. Councilmember Barnich, any questions?
I just have one. Can you go back to the slide? Talks about South County, and it sort of lists the projects that might be slated. Yes, right here. So just for instance, the road repairs right there. What sort of a timeline are we looking at? Is that like that might take ten years to have improvements, road repairs, or because I just imagine, I mean, there's a lot of improvements throughout the county, and so we're going to start collecting money right away. And so what does that look like?
So part of that's figured out as the next step when we do a strategic investment plan, but I can paint a pretty good picture here, and that's some projects region-wide take a long time to develop. A one-on-one project takes ten years to develop, would be collecting funds. If we if we broke it down and said everybody gets one-twentieth of their funds every year, that takes too long to get anything done. Those projects take a long time. We we can say they'll get their funds, but right now, we can collect those funds and use them now for year one, year two, year three, to jumpstart road maintenance projects in local, smaller areas. So let's just say that using twenty-nine million dollars up there, if if developing that strategic investment plan, the city of Arroyo Grande, Grover Beach, and Morave, for three small cities, said, hey, if we just had five million dollars, six million dollars, nine million dollars in the first year, we could make margin of market improvement right away to bring our PCI up without having to find, without having to wait for nine years to go by, and then once that PCI goes up a little bit, it costs a little bit less to maintain it at that status quo. Did that answer your question?
I think so. Thank you. No, no, it's good. Thank you.
Okay, Councilmember Seacrest, any questions?
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you for your presentation. And just one question. It was one of your first slides, and you were speaking about how much funds I think we were bringing locally, but then there's a there's a statement that says one billion dollars from Sacramento. What? I think I know what that means, but I'm not totally sure.
So leveraging. Okay, so we've seen our neighboring counties use this money and leverage a hundred million dollars in one grant program out of Sacramento. That same county can go back three more times to that same grant program and get another two hundred or more million dollars just from that one grant program. At the same time, we go after grants also. We've applied for sixty-one grants over the last seven years, and we've won twenty of them. We have not gotten a third of the money we were hoping for because we can't put in enough money in order to get the same amount of money back out like those counties that are self-help or have that special sales tax. So looking at the best guess, if everybody said, no, no, all we want to do is local road maintenance. I can't leverage dollar one out of Sacramento for local road maintenance. If everybody said, we're going to take one hundred let's say ten million, we're going to take ten million dollars and put it on Safe Routes to School. We can turn that into a hundred million dollars without that much effort. There's a great match for Safe Routes to School out there. Maybe they don't have a hundred million dollars in the first year, to be fair, but over over the years, we would capture a tenfold increase for Safe Routes to School. Active transportation, you can see a four- or five-fold bump up when you apply for something from the state. They are very much interested in funding our California Coastal Trail and pieces that connect to it. So how do we offer up more money or leverage more money and get it back? Right now, Santa Cruz has won a hundred and fifty, offered thirty million dollars, one hundred and fifteen million dollars for their coastal trail. We offered twelve million dollars. It's all we could squeeze out of SlowCog at the time, two years ago, and we won thirty million dollars, and we said, yeah, but Santa Cruz are dancing on the streets because they got a hundred-plus million dollars for it.
Thank you.
Councilmember George, any questions?
I just have a question. You mentioned a lot about the freeways. So are you planning on spending these funds to fix the freeways, and how does that work with Caltrans? And if we can fix our own freeways, then Caltrans will never give us money. So just explain to me the politics of that.
Okay. Two parts to it. Let's make sure we get both. Caltrans is very interested in fixing the rural area corridors that are focus routes. Very important to them. That's why Forty-Six East has collected hundreds of millions of dollars to improve it all the way to the county line. The rural area is different than the urban areas. The urban area, which is one-on-one from basically Paso Robles all the way down to Napa Mo. Caltrans will say urban areas need to compete with urban areas. So when we go for a grant in the urban area, anywhere between Paso Robles and Napa Mo, they say, okay, you're competing with Sacramento, the Bay Area, Los Angeles, San Diego, and the San Joaquin Valley. It's much harder to compete at that level, so we're it's challenging to get funds out of Caltrans for our one-on-one improvements, unlike Forty-Six East. We do win once every twenty-five years. And they do safety improvements. They do maintenance improvements. I'm not discounting what they do, and the spend on our one-on-one is very important, what they do. But when it's an interchange or a auxiliary lane to connect ramp to ramp, or if it's a widening like in Shell Beach, that's going to be a managed shoulder. Each one of these things up to the region to find the money and and go after or and fund. And Caltrans, absent that once every twenty-five years, isn't going to be a partner for that.
That's okay. That's good. Thank you. My next question for you, just piggybacking off of Councilmember Barnich mentioned. So the thirty-three million that you're referring to, is that over the course of twenty years, that sunset period?
Thirty-three million is the guaranteed base amount for Arroyo Grande over twenty years. Then you go after the other sixty-seven million. Then you go after the state funds of let's just go with a almost unlimited amount that's out there that we could apply for.
Understood. Thank you very much. I appreciate the presentation.
Mayor Pro Tem, any questions?
Let me. Yeah, so I guess trying to get to the bottom line is is a county tax versus a local tax. So you mentioned leveraging. So is there a formal advantage to being a county self-help as opposed to a city using their own funds to leverage wealth? Just use your example of Safe Routes to School. If the cities got together and put together ten million dollars, would they have the same grant opportunities with the state that we would have based on having a a county-wide tax?
I'll say yes and no. So the city can go after those active transportation or Safe Route School grants also. Can you put in big dollars like thirty-two million dollars like Santa Cruz did? Probably not. But you could if the city council said, we want to carve out that chunk of money for it. The city cannot front itself money by shifting funds around like SlowCog could from a one-on-one project to the city that's wait, one-on-one project's waiting, the city's waiting for money, can use the money upfront. I'm sorry, I'm getting there. Projects that are higher priority like Safe Route School, it's easy to do, ready to go. Road maintenance is easy to do, ready to go. Active transportation depends, but often can be quicker than a one-on-one improvement or a new road widening project. SlowCog can front those monies faster than the city can collect waiting for their one-twentieth, or not one-twentieth, but their entire amount every year on their own. The other part of that is SlowCog's measure is a guaranteed only for Uh, it's on their own. The other part of that is Slocog's measure is a guaranteed only for transportation. It can't shift to something else. It's only for transportation because it's a special tax and requires a two-thirds voter approval. Uh, the city can't guarantee its four roads unless you go for a special tax also. And then it would be. A two-thirds as well, as opposed to a general measure that goes into the general fund. Did I get everything?
But trying to get back to, to, to the bottom line, leveraging the funds is the key. Is, is the city in the same position as Slocog is for leveraging funds? If we put up, let's, let's say something outrageous that we. Decide to put up $20 million to make some overpass improvement, would we have the same opportunity to, to, to leverage those funds directly with the state? That's Slocog does.
I think for most grant programs the state offers, yes, there are a couple that they expect the region to either apply for or to buy off or sign off on who is. Applying and rate them. Amongst the region, who's the best one that should be sent to the state? But generally, yes, you can apply as just as well. Um, you would not get the benefit of the uh, million dollars that would come by formula. For being self-help. Uh, you would not get the $5 million uh, windfall one time from the state or becoming self-help. Uh, but going after those grants, absolutely go after them. We encourage that. We do as well.
But just to clarify, that $6 million is county-wide, not.
County-wide.
Individual cities. Okay, thank you.
Um, okay, so let's start here. So. The 3 million added to the four smallest cities. Who made that decision?
The Slocog Board, uh. Working with city managers, we reviewed options to distribute the funds. We landed on population basis. And then added $3 million because the four. Small cities really were below the line that we were hoping to see.
So this is a proposal. This has not been adopted as.
The formula distribution has been approved by Slocog Board already.
Okay, can that be undone by a future Slocog Board?
I, I suppose it could be.
Okay, so can you go back to the slide that Councilmember Barnich asked for, the one that lists projects in the South County? Because honestly, I don't care. Um, yes, this one. So again, I'm just making sure my head is clear on what's here. So. Aurora Grande says, it says 33 million. So in theory, our portion. I don't even know if that's right nomenclature, but our portion of 20 years' worth of that tax would be 30 million. How much of that tax would be collected in South County?
We looked at the distribution of funds based on sales tax collected. And what we found was, it's not going to be understandable if we do it that way by the general public. They, they. The unincorporated areas spend the money because they live, there's 40% of the population lives in unincorporated areas. But most of the money is spent inside cities. The unincorporated voters are gonna feel disenfranchised because none of the money's coming to, very little money's coming to their communities.
Okay, let me be clear with my question. How much of the total pie is coming from the South County region?
Sales tax-wise?
Yes. Because that would include the, I'm not asking city by city, I'm just asking for the region.
How much of the sales tax comes to South?
Hey, go to, go to your, I'm sorry, go to your map that shows the other one that you were on.
Okay.
It doesn't show like collection.
So like this, okay? How much of that two, that 200 million for South County is actually collected in the South County?
Okay, let's try to do some math off the top of my head. San Luis Obispo collects a big chunk. Uh, so first of all, let's break, break this down to $35 million a year. Uh, this is escalated by 20 years, 35.
Yeah, you know what? I'll, I'll just get to the crux of my question. The crux of my question is. Is the same amount of sales tax collected in South County staying in South County?
My expectation would be it might be more. Pismo Beach collects a lot per capita, but not a lot overall. Aurora Grande is probably right on the fence of donor and recent.
I, I don't care about cities, just the whole region.
I'm trying to go through it in my head. Uh, but I don't, I, I've developed those numbers. I don't have them in front of me.
Okay, then, then, then I'll hold up that question and go back to that other one with the project. So. My first, I guess the essence of my first question, thank you, is how much of that is leakage? In other words, if we're collecting 40 million here and we're getting 33 million back, that's not a super great deal for the South County. That's what I'm trying to identify. Um, I, I recognize you don't have that in front of you tonight, so I get that. But that's my concern. My other concern or, or question is. I thought earlier in your presentation, you said that road repairs couldn't be leveraged.
For state funds. Can't be, we can't go to the state and say, we'll offer up $1 to try to get five more dollars for road repairs. They cannot. This is not state funds. This is our, these would be local funds generated for Aurora Grande and the other cities for road repairs.
Right. So but what you answered, Councilmember Seacrest, is saying that could be leveraged for. A lot more, but if we're gonna use them for road repairs, then that money's not gonna get leveraged.
If you use them all for road repairs, you can't go to the state and say, we want to leverage this.
Okay, I'm just looking at what you have there. So you have 29 million to road repairs.
And this is, my question is, do you want to adjust the 29, adjust the four? Or do you want to lock in and guarantee your city's going to go after, let's use the $4 million that's up there. $4 million worth of commuter road safety and congestion improvements and grants. To triple, quadruple, or, or, or more for state grants. That $4 million is a placeholder. This is the question to you guys. Is that enough in that section for you? It is a guide at this point in time. If you want to guarantee that future councils will abide by it. Abide by a. Uh, what, uh, a 90/10 split, 10% has gotta be used for leveraging, or 20% has gotta be used for leveraging. Then I would encourage your council to. Take that number and say, we want that locked in. We want that to be bold. And the bold numbers would hold throughout the life of the measure. If it's not bold, the council will decide uh, with more flexibility. Going into community roads or going out of community road improvements. Can I try to translate?
Yeah, would you please? Thank you.
So, so what he, what he's saying is that we would, and I've told Slocog this, that our interest is, is much more than developing new improvements. Is in maintaining the roads that we have. So the number that came back here reflects that, that most of the money would be spent on road repair. And would not be available to get any, any sort of leveraging. And a much smaller amount would be spent on congestion improvements, which would be. A, available. So. I don't know if I'm helping.
Yeah, no, that totally helped. Thank you. So then it's really a matter of policy to determine for us. And, and you know you're in competition with us. Because we're trying to decide what we're gonna do about this with. With, we're gonna support and, well, not support, but ask our own citizens for our own measure, which would bring in. Over the 20-year window at the number that we're being um. Uh, that we're being given right now, 5 million, that's $100 million rather than supporting this that gets us 33 that can be undone by a future Slocog.
Not by, not undone by a future Slocog. Your earlier question was, can Slocog Board change that formula later? My answer should have said, on May 1st, they could. Unlikely they will, but they can't change anything after the voters have approved it. It's locked in.
I see.
So, so even we couldn't change it. If, if a future council said, hey, we, we now want to do an overpass, we want to take. Money out of that 29 million. And try to leverage it to do the overpass, would they be able to do that?
As it stands right now, because those numbers aren't bold, then yes, because you could push some of that 29 million dollars into the. Lower section and say, we want to go after a new overpass and leverage it. But the same thing happens for the other way. The community road improvements could go up and just say, it's 100% road maintenance.
When you say it's not bold, do you simply mean it's not bold on my slide?
I, I, I mean that as we're developing the ordinance, there's a lot more, there's more pieces to come. Your 33 million dollars is locked in. It's a 33 divided by 700 percentage that comes to Aurora Grande. With escalations, it's gonna go up from 33. It's that percentage that's going to be given back to you. The 29 and the four are not locked in. At this point, you could choose to lock them in. You could choose to say, we want to have a minimum of. Or a guarantee of, and I would work that into the ordinance. But. If you want the maximum flexibility, you say, well, this. River Beach was looking at this last night and they came up with shifting a little bit from their uh, road maintenance into the improvements. And they identified that it's more of a guidance. We want to show that we're trying to do this. But what they didn't want the. Inflexibility uh, to be put upon them also.
Okay, thank you. That's my questions. Any come up afterwards? Okay. All right, um, thank you very much. And um, this is not a public hearing item, but it's probably of interest to the public. So I'm gonna go ahead and see if anybody here would like to ask you a question while we're here. Um, and just making clear to the public, this is Slocog's proposal, not ours. So we can't answer your questions. But if you do have questions, come on up uh, at this time. So we'll open up public comment. And seeing no one here, let's check in online.
If any members of the public on Zoom would like to make a comment, please raise your hand. There are no raised hands.
Great, thank you very much. Um, so council, it says, provide comments if desired. Um, does anyone desire to make comments at this time?
Okay, are you requesting any direction from us this evening, Mr. Guthrie? Or are you good for right now?
All right, thank you so much for coming down. We appreciate it. All right, so that takes us to item 6D, City Manager Communications. Mr. Downing.
Yes, good evening, Mayor. Uh, members of the city council, Matt Downing, you're a city manager. Um, I was very excited to see all the officers here. I realize that's my first swearing-in after my swearing-in as a city manager. So. Uh, particularly neat because I was on my first ride-along with our fine police department last night. Uh, with our senior officer, Jeff Smith, who was here in the back. So uh, thanks to Chief Martinez and uh, Senior Officer Smith for that opportunity. Good to see the community at night through their eyes. Uh, that was, that was neat. Um, on my list of items for you this evening. I did want to inform the council and the community that we did uh, conduct interviews for the. Vacant uh, fire chief position, even though we do have an interim chief, he was here. We, uh, so we did do that. We do have a preferred candidate who has been selected and has backgrounds. And as soon as we are able to announce who that is, we will do so. And then also you may see a new fire truck in and around the community. It's a big, long, blue and yellow tiller truck. So it has a driver both in the front and in the back, so that they can maneuver this big, long piece of machinery around uh, tight corners. Uh, the 560 Fire Department did a post over the weekend. Uh, and then we, I believe we did a post as well of them taking a very tight corner. In a very dense development. So that's a, a neat thing for us. Provides an opportunity for the firefighters to train on that piece of equipment prior to us receiving our tiller truck in the next few years. So um, on the police side of things, our uh, chief of police, Chief Martinez, participated in a mobile crisis working group. That was facilitated by the County of San Luis Obispo. And then this is to enhance services for those experienced behavioral health crises. Uh, the program does support collaboration and coordination among the stakeholders, providing behavioral health services. So if you have any questions about that, or anybody in the community has a question about that, please reach out to Chief Martinez. And he can get you in contact with, uh, with folks. And then lastly, uh. Piggybacking off of the last item, uh, on our, our side of things. We did have almost 700 responses to our community survey that we've already received. So that's the tear-off card. As well as the online, our goal was 1,000. And by the end of March, and it is March 12th, and we are already at 700. So. We're very excited about that. We're very encouraged about all of those numbers. So we do continue to encourage folks who live here to take that survey. Uh, help give us uh, what's important to you, because we are listening. Um, uh, going back to the poll that we had done last year. Um, we have 90% of our residents who believe that uh, the quality of life in Aurora Grande is good or great. And that's incredible to have. So uh, we're continuing to engage with the community. We're continuing to listen and see what we can uh, do to continue to provide those services. So. I will wrap up this evening because we had a long presentation this evening. I answer any questions for the council?
Any questions from council? I have a quick one. How did the community outreach go for the uh, workshop or the general plan?
Yeah, the general plan workshop was held about two thirds ago. Uh, very well attended. We had about 50 folks uh, from the community at that workshop. For a planning workshop, based on my previous uh, knowledge of planning workshops, that's an incredible turnout. We actually did better than the city of Bakersfield, who has a lot more residents than we do. So um, my, my hats off to uh, Director Pedrati and his team for putting together a pretty fun workshop. A lot of, I got to see a lot of faces that I hadn't seen in a while. Um, including former planning commissioner, who I haven't seen in years. So that was a lot of fun. Uh, but yes.
Excellent. All right, that takes us to uh, well, we have city council reports, but not this time. It'll be at our next meeting. So that takes us to item eight. Community comments and suggestions. This is your chance to come talk to the city council about items that are not on tonight's agenda. Please keep your comments to three minutes or less and address the council as one body. So if you have anything to talk to us about that is not on our agenda tonight, now's the time to come forward.
I'm Patty Welsh. Um, something I've looked into for a while now with Chief Lieberman. Um, I'm hoping to get some answers. On it is a CERT program, which is Citizens Emergency Response Team. Um. Closest one I've found is North County. The soonest I can get into a class is fall. I really don't want to drive over the grade at night. Um, it would be great if we could have one in the area. I don't know where to even start looking. Everywhere I've looked, it's a dead end. So uh. Something I'm interested in, I know some of my neighbors are, would be a great program to have here, I think. So thank you.
On that, someone contacted me about that not too long ago and told me Red Cross was a place to start with that. Um, would anyone else like to speak on items not on tonight's agenda?
My name's Gary Schmidt. I'm with, I live in Sunrise Terrace Mobile Home Park. I'm here because everything I have access to led me to believe that the Verizon appeal of the planning commission's rejection. Of their project would be on the agenda tonight. I have made efforts to get information about the process now and have not received answers to my request. Apparently the shot clock has expired. And according to the city manager, we are faced with a deemed approved situation since no action has been taken. Hopefully this is not the case. But we are in the dark as to what is going on. I read now from the William and Mary Business Law Review, quote. "One might think that after 20 years of litigation, local governments would know which telecommunications facilities have to be approved. Under federal law, and if they are not going to be approved. A, a, to construct a facility. How to do it in a way that is sustainable by a court. But it is understandable that local governments are inadequate to the task. Generally, they are made up of laypeople. When it comes to telecommunications issues with very limited resources. Going against well-financed, very experienced professionals in the telecommunications industry. Thus, the best case is being made on the side of disputes. And often a poor case on the side of local residents and taxpayers. I am hoping that you will inform us, old local residents and taxpayers. What the process is now, that the shot clock has expired. And that you will allow us to make our best case as to why the proposed cell tower. Is inappropriate in its present proposed location. I know that you council members are often caught between a rock and a hard place when it comes to decisions you have to make. From our point of view, though, you are indeed standing in the gap. Between pressure from the FCC and the telecommunications giants and ourselves. Citizens who seem to matter less and less these days. So I thank you for being diligent. To look at the facts in this case. And I applaud the planning commission for the courageous and bold step that they took. To identify application failures that had escaped the city staff. Thank you for your time.
Would anyone else like to come forward on items not on tonight's agenda?
Good evening, Mayor, fellow council members. I'm following Gary here. I'm Conrad Betsed. I live in Sunrise Terrace. I'm here to talk about or surely be an upcoming topic on a future agenda. Regarding a proposed Verizon cell tower at 789 Valley Road. The planning commission has denied a Verizon application. They could see through the smokescreen and I, and denied the proposed cell tower. The planning commission denied this cell tower after much discussion and comments. From the public and discussion amongst themselves. from the public and discussion amongst themselves. Now Verizon has appealed to you, the Arroyo Grande City Council, regarding the proposed cell tower. You should also deny the application by Verizon, as did the planning commission. Verizon has not followed FCC guidelines by looking at and identifying alternative sites. There is a site identified at Saint John's Church, and they have not been contacted regarding the cell tower. But Verizon has lied and claimed they did. This proposed cell tower site at seven eighty-nine Valley Road is not compatible with the surrounding area, regardless of the screening Verizon has proposed. It will be an eyesore on the community. No matter how a cell tower is proposed to be camouflaged, it is still a cell tower standing above all else in the area. Move it, deny it, find another site. One more note of interest to you as a city council. Within the last couple of months, the County of Fresno Board of Supervisors has denied a proposal for location of a Verizon cell tower. So denial can be done effectively and without repercussions. If the city council does care about the community, then you will no vote this Verizon cell tower proposal. Do not allow Verizon to bully Arroyo Grande when there are an alternative sites available. Thank you for your time.
Would anyone else like to speak on items not on tonight's agenda?
All right, so you know, we'll check in online. If any members of the public on Zoom would like to make a comment, please raise your hand. For the caller, please press star nine to raise your hand. We do have, the first speaker is Gaia Powell. All right, Gaia, you're able to speak now.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
Great. Okay, I'll be speaking on behalf of Mike Harris, who's on a plane, so he couldn't make his own statement. My experience surrounding the city's handling of my water well application has shed light on significant deviations from the principles of fairness, impartiality, and comprehensive evaluation during the public hearing process. There is a critical need for immediate rectification. The recent public hearing concerning my water well application was marred by several unsettling occurrences that raised grave concern about the process's integrity. Notably, the mayor's interaction with the city staff during the hearing demonstrated a lack of rigorous inquiry and an unsettling dismissal of crucial issues relevant to my application. The substantial financial and environmental repercussions of denying my application were astonishingly overlooked. The mayor's repeated question, "Does it matter?" in response to these significant concerns unveiled a disconcerting bias and a blatant disregard for factors critically pertinent to both my position as the applicant, as the applicant, and to the wider community's welfare. Compounding these concerns was the mayor's approach to the city staff's recommendation. Her inquiry as to why those disadvantages had been identified in the recommendation against my application went unanswered. More troubling was the mayor's lack of persistence or an answer, a failure that significantly, significantly undermines her role in ensuring a balanced and informed decision-making process. The mayor was unwilling and unable to critically assess and question the city staff's position, thereby tarnishing and the integrity of the hearing and the legitimacy of any subsequent decision. These procedural deficiencies are far, are far from minor. They fundamentally undermine the essence of a fair public hearing. The mayor's reluctance to address significant questions and to seek a balanced perspective resulted in a skewed presentation that unjustly favored the city's staff's recommendations. Actions of this nature suggest that decisions are made based are, are based on preconceived biases rather than an objective assessment of the facts and community feedback. In response to these glaring failures, I requested that the public hearing on my water well application be reopened under impartial guidance devoid of a previous bias or negligence. Furthermore, the mayor must recuse herself from any further proceedings related to this matter, especially given her premature expression of support of the city staff's position in her October sixth email.
Ms. Powell, thank you. We're at three minutes.
Okay, my husband will finish.
Okay, go ahead and start.
Michael Ponzalon, I'm just going to, uh, continue. Um, in, let me read this again. In response to these glaring failures, I request that the public hearing on my water well application be reopened under impartial guidance, devoid of the previous bias and negligence. Furthermore, the mayor must recuse herself from any further proceedings related to this matter, especially given her premature expression of the support for the city staff's position in her October sixth email. In which she stated, "I strongly support staff's position. It is the correct call based on policies put forth by the council." These statements blatantly predetermine the hearing's outcome. This demand for recusal is grounded in the need to uphold the integrity of the hearing process and ensure all relevant factors are considered impartially and thoroughly.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, our next speaker is Rhonda Odell.
She's gonna be about a later, uh, item, perhaps.
Hi there. Did you guys want me to speak now or later?
Do you have items, uh, do you have comments for items not on the agenda?
No, actually, we're on the agenda. I'm on the agenda, so it'll be later than number twelve, I think, or something.
Okay, thank you. You'll have an opportunity then to speak.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, so our next speaker will be Ethel Landers.
Hello?
We can hear you.
Okay, great, thank you. Uh, Mayor and council members as well as city staff, I'd like to thank you each for your service to our community. I adore living in Arroyo Grande, but I want to speak to you about the effort by Verizon Wireless to place a fifty-five foot cell tower in front of our front gate and about a hundred feet away from homes in Sunrise Terrace, which is a senior mobile home park. I request that each of you please support your planning commission's decision in denying this location. Of course, everyone wants better cell service, and Verizon Wireless deserves to place a tower somewhere in the geography that they've designated as underserved. But a pretend water tower, standing in a paved parking lot one hundred feet from the front gate of a senior living community, is a visual atrocity. And so it is from people's windows who live one hundred feet from the base of this proposed cell tower. Literally, it will be straight out my living room window. I'm about two hundred and fifty feet from that cell tower. We have over four hundred and forty seniors living in this community, and senior citizens are a vulnerable population. But we are also voters. We all love Arroyo Grande, but we don't love radio frequency radiation from eighteen antennas and the health effects. And I know, I know, Verizon will quote the nineteen ninety-six Telecommunication Act and how it states cell service is perfectly safe. Well, we also, we also don't love that our property values will immediately drop between eight and twenty-five percent when we live next to a cell tower. So I ask you to look within your hearts and please, please deny the appeal by Verizon Wireless to place that cell tower at seven eight nine Valley Road. Thank you.
And there are no other raised hands.
Thank you. So we'll close public comment, and we do have a few questions for staff. So, um, first I'll start with Mr. Downing. Are you aware of a South County search program? I, I am familiar with what that is and have been approached before, but.
That's been brought up several times. The response that I've always heard is that there's simply not enough interest in it. Uh, I agree, I've, I've looked into it before, uh, thinking it'd be a really interesting program, uh, but unfortunately, we're in the minority on that.
Thank you. And then, um, just kind of going in backwards order here. Um, I know that there's updated information out there, at least about the Verizon, um, whatever's happening with that. I would appreciate a, a public update as well. So whatever you can share.
Uh, thank you, Mary. Yes, so, um, uh, community development is certainly available to answer interested parties' questions regarding the state of the appeal. Uh, in response to public comment, I do want to note, the city in the, and Verizon did enter into what's known as a tolling agreement, which means the appeal that Verizon filed of the planning commission's denial is stayed essentially or, or delayed until at least June eleventh, twenty twenty-four this year. So over that time period, Verizon is preparing their appeal materials, looking at their site's analysis um, before an eventual, eventual appeal to the city council. So that information is available to, uh, interested parties, and, uh, Mr. Pedrati uh, could certainly provide additional information to, to parties. But regarding public comment and the shot clock, uh, that has been extended by, by nature of the negotiated tolling agreement. So the application is not at this time deemed approved.
And Mr. Pedrati and his team will be sending out that information to interested parties, uh, this week.
Great, thank you very much. So you'll get some updates. And finally, um, the last caller talked about reopening, uh, uh, the, the well hearing. It's my understanding we didn't make a decision that night and that we have a continued hearing. Is that correct?
That is correct. So the public comment portion of the noise well public hearing was closed at the February twenty-seventh meeting. Uh, council's deliberation is ongoing, so the item will be reopened and considered at the next, uh, March meeting.
Okay, great. And, um, we'll have you take a look at whatever email they brought up and see if there's any recusals that are, that are recommended.
Will do, Mary. Thank you.
Okay, so that will close public comment and take us straight to the consent agenda. So this is items nine collectively. Tonight, we have nine items nine A through nine E. Uh, does anyone have anything to, uh, ask questions about or pull for separate consideration? All right, then seeing, uh, no one, we will open up public comments. So if public would like to speak on items on tonight's agenda numbered nine A through nine E, please step forward now. Okay, then. I was making sure he wasn't turning this way. Okay. Um, then we'll check in online and see if anyone would like to comment on items nine A through nine E.
If any members of the public on Zoom would like to make a comment, please raise your hand. There are no raised hands.
All right, we'll close, uh, public comment, greens background of the council.
Madam Mayor, I move for approval of items nine A through nine E.
Yeah, we have a motion a second. Can we get a roll call, please?
Councilmember Barnage?
Yes.
Mayor Protam Guthrie?
Yes.
Councilmember George?
Yes.
Councilmember Seacrest?
Yes.
Mayor Ray Russell?
Yes. So reminding the public that we did do a little bit of reorganizing at the beginning of the evening. So at this time, we're gonna do item thirteen. This is council communications. So this is basically public comment for us, I guess. Hold on just a minute. Hold on just a minute, please.
What are you saying, Mayor Protam?
You're stepping down on the, oh, you can do.
We moved, we moved item thirteen after item nine.
Oh, okay.
So, um, does anyone have, uh, council communication? All right, so we'll close item thirteen and we'll move forward. Now remember that item ten A is getting moved to after items twelve collectively. So that takes us to item twelve A. This is conceptual village wayfinding, parking signage, and park. Let me redo that again. Conceptual Village Wayfinding and Parking Signage Program. Mr. Robison, nice to see you.
Thank you, Mayor, council members. Uh, we have Shannon Sweeney here, our city engineer. She's been heading this project. We've been working as a team, and she has, uh, some information to present.
Good evening, Mayor, Council. Shannon Sweeney, a city engineer. Uh, back in December, council requested that staff come back in March to discuss the village wayfinding sign program. So that is what we are doing tonight. So we'll be sharing some information for you. I assembled a small team and we have met several times. Uh, I'll share with you the progress to date as well as some next steps. So to start with, the team did a sign inventory, went around and looked at what signs exist in the village. We are not the first people to embark on signs, as we found over eighteen signs in the village. Uh, we had some preliminary meetings with, uh, a wayfinding consultant that was recommended by other cities, as well as looking at, uh, some information from the original sign maker uh, for the, um, light blue signs that you see in the village. Uh, the group also spent some time talking about, okay, what is it that we're trying to accomplish? And how would we go about accomplishing that? And, uh, by the time we were done, we decided that there were just too many variables. So we're looking for today's zip input, so we can really put some focus onto where the program should go at this point. Uh, once we do that, then we'll explore the options available that meet that intent and input that we received tonight, incorporate the feedback, and then speak to several stakeholder groups, including the Downtown Parking Association, uh, the Village Business Group, as well as the Architectural Abuse Committee. We'll take that information, refine the project scope, develop a project cost estimate, and then come back here to council with a refined program package and a funding request that meets that intent. Right, uh, we did a sign inventory. We found, uh, three groups of signs. Uh, this first group is wooden or wood-like signs that are on pedestals, called monument signs. We found seven of these wooden signs, and for the most part, these are facility signs. So you see there's one in front of City Hall, uh, Sentinel Park, um, Heritage Square Park. You see one in front of the car corral that simply says public parking. Um, there's also some wayfinding of sorts. We've got a welcome to the village of Arroyo Grande sign that's in front of the redwood tree at Traffic Way, as well as one in front of, I'll say, Lightning Joe's that points to, uh, Bridge Street, where it indicates that there are offices and shops, restaurants, museums, and public parking down Bridge Street. All right, uh, the second category of signs are what I call the, the public parking signs. Uh, these are characterized by being bright blue and, uh, a slightly different shape. We found nine of these. Um, you will see one on the traffic signal at Mason and Branch. Um, there is one at the top of Mason at La Point Street. And then you see several on the, uh, entrances to the little parking area, Olehand Alley, as, um, and so those are, uh, um, nine signs that you find basically indicating parking. And then when you're looking for signs, it's amazing what you find. We found these signs, but they match nothing else. Um, but you find them, uh, showing where the community center is. Um, interesting since that's the women's club and not a community center at all. Uh, but you know, when you're looking for signs, you find signs. So, uh, this map shows, uh, where we found those signs. Uh, the colors match the style. So you see the teal is the facility monument signs, uh, the bright blue and the parking signs, and then that brown is that odd, like, uh, uh, it's a community center sign. Uh, so one of the first variables we have here is intent. Wanted to understand what it is we were hoping to accomplish this time around with wayfinding. Uh, do we want some design consistency? Uh, the bottom of the net. Uh, do we want some design consistency? Uh, the bottom of the next few slides all contain these three pictures. I call them my representative pictures. There's one representative of each style of sign that exists. Do we want to create some additional consistency here? Uh, do we want the public parking signs to look similar uh in shape and style as the monument signs? Do we want to change that community center sign to match the same as the other signs? What purpose are we looking for here? Do we want more signs indicating that they're public parking? Uh, do we want to identify a few additional facilities such as the swinging bridge, a council chambers, Olehand Alley? Do we want to point the way to the restaurants, uh, to additional parks? Do we want to include some regional facilities like Wine Country, Lopez Lake or the freeway? Do we want to upgrade our existing signs and just maintain that number? Do we want to add more signs? Uh, do we wish to augment our program or do we wish to start from scratch? We had um the uh wayfinding consultant say, hey, have you taken a look at your logo? Do you want to keep that same logo? So so the question is, how far back, how far from the beginning do we want to go? Or do we simply want to um do more of the same or simply go with some consistency? So we could really use some some help honing in on what it is we're trying to accomplish here. Uh, we looked at shapes. You know, when you get into looking at signs, it's amazing how many different things you can look at. But what kind of shape do you want? Um, we pulled out these shapes as, you know, shapes we find on various different signs. So you can see panel one kind of matches the the facility signs we have, whereas uh the parking signs, they kind of match closer to to panel three. I don't know what's going on with the community center sign. I I guess it's kind of like panel seven. But uh we need to settle, uh, maybe we need to settle in on a shape. Do we want them to be all the same? Are we okay with them being different? What shape do we want? Color was a real fun one. Um, so we've got three different colors of signs already. Uh, when we started asking questions about the monument signs, that teal blue, turns out that's a proprietary color. You can't even find that if you went to uh your local hardware store. So um that color is consistent through the city. If you go to Kingo Park uh in the Berry Gardens, you see that that tealish light blue. You could see here the Soto Sports Complex also has that blue. Should we pick a commercial color that's similar to that? We have Baltic Sea and Fiji, which are two commercial colors that are available. It becomes a lot easier for us to maintain our own signs when we can go to the local hardware store and pick up a gallon of paint because somebody graffiti one of our signs. So um, I really, I'm really fond of that teal color. It's unique. It's different from our other communities. Why could we, could we go with a a color that's maybe something that's a little bit easier for us to find from the hardware store? All right, um, so we've got the the monument signs and then the pole signs. So um, the pole signs um could have a shape and um, you know, features that look like this. If you look at the sign that's basically across the street, it's on a square galvanized breakaway post. Whereas if you go to the one in front of um the car corral on Nevada Street, it's a painted black round post. So you don't have consistency with with what they're posted on. Either do we want those to be the same? Um, do we want those uh parking signs to be the same color as the monument type style signs? So these, these are some examples on what they they might look like if we were to to start changing them. Uh, what kind of font do we want? Turns out the monument signs are a proprietary font. You can't go to Word and find that font. So we looked at different, yeah, there are a million fonts. Um, but you've got some font uh styles that are there um that that give you some idea about, uh, you know, do you want serifs? Do you not want serifs? Do you want to go with a more modern look? And you want to go with something that's that's a little bit more old fashioned? We got told by the consultant that you don't want to do all capital letters because that just starts to look like a block. So we would just veer away from, say, what the community center looks like and and go with more text that looks more like the Bridge Street sign. We learned so much about signs. Fascinating. All right, what you want those signs to say? Um, there's that that P there, but it doesn't tell you that there's free parking. Do you want it to say free parking? Do you want it to say public parking? Do you want it to say anything at all or just be a large P? Uh, we thought as a group that there was a missing opportunity with that sign in front of that redwood tree. I bet you anything when that sign was put in, that redwood tree was much smaller. But now that that tree is bigger, it really does afford us the opportunity to ma- make a much bigger sign. I thought when I started this project that our purpose was to let people know that there was parking behind the businesses. Maybe this is a great opportunity to make that sign bigger and say free parking behind businesses or more parking behind businesses, or for that matter, public parking behind businesses. Lots of different things that could be said there, but that, the size of that sign provides us an opportunity to maybe indicate more information there. There's a similar sign over at Firefighters Park. That's that sign in the lower right-hand corner. Also could be made bigger. By the way, you can see how much that sign has faded. Um, you know, that the color over time, especially these deep dark colors, do fade. All the more reason why, you know, it'd be nice to have a color that we could, you know, provide some maintenance on it. But we could, we could talk for hours probably just on what these, what these signs say. All right, where do we want these signs to go? Do we want to maintain the existing uh location of the signs? I think so. I think where our signs are located are actually pretty good. Um, if we were allowed, I'd want to move the sign across the street that's on a breakaway metal, you know, square pole to the nearest stoplight, but I bet you anything we're not going to be allowed to because um PG&E probably won't let us, but maybe we should at least change that pole out to be consistent with our other poles. Um, as I said earlier, let's consider perhaps expanding the verbiage on the welcome and Ferments Park signs. And I think that there's a great opportunity for adding a monument sign next to the brick crosswalk on the former Short Street that says, you know, with an arrow, kind of like the sign that's in front of Lightning Joe's um that points down towards Olehand Alley, the restrooms, um, kind of a a wayfinding monument sign at that location. All right, uh, we tried to get a sense of what are we talking about dollar wise? Uh, if we were to make the changes of, let's just refresh the monument signs, put them on um taller pedestals so that they are easier to see, they're kind of low to the ground and and harder to see. And if we changed out the whole signs um for for different styles and if we added uh the sign at Short Street, what we ended up with is a budget of around forty thousand. Um, but this is just, you know, taking the concept of uh updating the signs and locations that we already have. So this isn't necessarily what it's going to cost, but rather what we think it might cost based on some of the suggestions that staff came up with, just a starting point. So what are our next steps? I could use some input. Uh, there's a a lot of information we could use in order to refine this program and then gather some information from um the other stakeholders that are uh possibly involved. And then to return back with something way more refined than what we have right now. And then um some um requests for authorization to move forward with a program and with some funding. And with that, I'm open to questions and looking for input.
All right, thank you very much. Let's first checking with the council and see if there are questions. I'm sure there's lots to say, but questions, questions?
I I have questions, but I'd like to defer to the mayor since this is an item that um she had wanted to bring forth. I I think the biggest question I have is scope. It's just, and I appreciate the the tremendous work that went into this uh staff report. I just don't know if it's, I I don't know if this is what was intended. So I'd like to hear from the mayor.
Okay. Um, Councilmember Barnage, any questions?
Yes, please. Um, do we have a public restroom sign or is it just right at the restrooms?
I don't know. I don't know if any uh sign.
No wayfinding.
Exactly.
Yeah, okay, okay. I didn't think so, but I just want to make sure. Um. Um, let's see, on figure two and figure four, I think there's a question here. Maybe not. Let's see. In the staff report, figure two and figure four. Okay, the both of these have, are these the only? Are these the only signs that aren't the blue parking signs that have public parking? So figure two and figure four have, they say public parking, they're wayfinding signs. They have an arrow. And then we also have the 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 blue, the nine. Are those pretty much the the, so like eleven parking wayfinding signs approximately? Am I missing any?
Uh, yes, I believe that you are correct.
Okay, okay. Um. Okay, that those are all my questions right now. Thank you. Mayor Protam, any questions?
So ju- just went on the on the list of uh what we were developing the cost. So you you did the some there to be replaced, some of them were the the larger signs. Is it, are you thinking of replacement because the signs are damaged? Or is that just in a desire to bring all the fonts that line or just or the shapes or I'm just trying to get an idea of why we were replacing them?
All of the above. Uh, you will see if you look carefully, there's deterioration on the 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 rails on the side and the finials and um some are faded. Uh, some you can see the wording is cracked. Uh, and if we were to go through at if it were the desire of council to go with a standard color and standard font and if we went through doing half of them because of we're dealing with the deterioration, that then there may be some desire to go through the remainder of them and make them consistent. Um, we went with the uh assumption that all of them would need to be replaced for some reason or another, hence this dollar amount, uh, which is simply a starting point to say, you know, what are we looking at as far as funding goes?
And then the one that's surprising that was eight hundred dollars for those blue standard look like, you know, you could order them from a catalog, eight hundred bucks for those?
It is eight hundred dollars because there are signs on either side. So I did a four hundred dollars each side. So it ended up being eight hundred. And you are right, if we were to come out of a catalog, meaning not standard, it would cost about a hundred, hundred and fifty dollars. But if we were to go and um custom make it, then you are looking at a little bit closer to your four hundred dollars aside.
Okay, all right, thank you.
So I don't have questions. This is a question for the council. And so I'm looking forward to the discussion that's going to happen, but I only have one question. And I guess it it boils down to the P. I've had business owners asking me literally for years for wayfinding for parking, and we have nine of them. And I have never seen but two of them. They do not stand out, that you can't, drivers can't see them. And when they do see them, it says P. And I might think that I'm going somewhere else. Um, so my question is, why is the, would the, is there a reason? It's just simply a P, just like it's an H for hospital? Or is that something that staff would recommend? Or can we do something that's a little more clear about that means free parking that way without doing the P and shoving free parking under it? I love that face, Mr. Downing.
And I'm probably beat red at this point, too.
You are.
Um, because I'm to blame for those P parking signs. So those, that was an effort way back, I believe in twenty thirteen or something like that, to try and get people to understand where the free parking is. The P is the universal international symbol for for parking. Um, and so we were trying, the reason they're not a standard shape is because we were trying to get them to fit in the village. We didn't want them to necessarily stand out and blue is a common color uh background for parking, the the universal P. However, we can do whatever the council would like because I am not married to those signs.
All right, then we'll leave that to council discussion about scope and what we want and all of that. So um I've received a um a notice from our city clerk that we are going to need to take a five-minute break to allow a a technical issue to be dealt with for the people who are at home on the Zoom. So we're going to take a quick five-minute break and then we'll go to public comment.
Check one, two, three. Check one, two, three. Okay, we're good. I'll leave. Yeah.
California flag it. I don't have mic again. Nope. I do. There, there we go. Alright, alright, welcome back, everyone. So we are in the middle of item twelve A, and we are just about to open up public comment. So, uh, if anyone in the chambers would like to come forward on item twelve A, this is our wayfinding program, please do so now.
I've got, uh, two things about the wayfinding program. First, a bit of personal experience. Uh, you've got some signs up and around places, but I do know that when you're on Black Point Street and some of the connected spots, it's hard to find the actual entrances to the parking lots. And you do start questioning if you don't know where you are, whether you're in the right place, or if you've somehow driven out of town. So, that is something I would like to be looked at. The second comment I have is that there's some talk about whether you want to unify the, uh, I forget what you call them, the first and the third sign. So my comment is, it looks like you've got the start of a sign hierarchy forming, actually, with, uh, the last sign being good for, you know, landmarks within an area, but the first being for like major destinations. Like, for example, uh, Village of Arroyo Grande versus a a community center in Arroyo Grande. Um, not sure if it would work for bathrooms specifically, but I do think there's some views looking into whether or not you want to have multiple different types of signs in the general standard.
Thank you. Anyone else on this item? In-house? Okay, seeing no one come forward, we'll check in online. Rhonda, now your chance.
Okay, we do have one raised hand, but if any other members of the public on Zoom would like to make a comment, please raise your hand. And Rhonda, you should be able to speak now.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, I guess you save the best for last. No, I'm just kidding. Um, anyway, uh, I wanted to thank you, first of all, mayor, for ask, allowing me to have the opportunity to speak on this matter, and also appreciate all that you, um, are doing in the effort to improve the village infrastructure. And I do, in relating to that, I just want to say a couple of things about the signage that you're talking about. At my age, the bigger, the better, the brighter, the better, and the simpler, the better. So I think a nice clean font on those, and, and, and speaking about the P, I think it, for the, uh, person that's driving through and they're in a, not in a rush, because they're but that they would use, uh, free public parking would be a better thing to have on there or whatever, so that people know exactly what they're looking, where they're parking. Now, one thing I wanted to bring up, uh, besides this, is what I was hoping to look at, and I don't know if any of you have considered this before, is having a directory in the village. Um, they have them in a lot of different cities, and their directories that would maybe be at the front of the village, maybe at the end, and they're kind of showing where all the different shopping is and what kind of shopping there is. And unfortunately, I sent it to the mayor earlier, but I didn't know how to send it to the rest of you, so you probably don't have that there to look at. But, um, it's kind of, it has maps on it and directories to show where parking, restrooms, it could show anything you want, and also where the shopping, especially the ones that are not in the core of the village. And obviously, I, tha- that is important to me, because I'm on the end, the beginning of the village, and the, the walk-through traffic doesn't always make it that far. So it would be kind of nice if we had, I don't know if you are familiar with that, where they have a and where it has, like, again, it has, um, uh, it's better for navigation, and it kind of just is a benefit for both the, the business owners and the customers coming into town. So they know where to find, like, oh, this is where the eateries are, this is where this wine place is, whatever. But that's kind of one of my, but that's what I was hoping that we could look at. Uh, so when we were talking about the wayfinding, I guess that's what my thought was, was directories. And again, I appreciate what you're doing with the signage. So that's kind of what I just wanted to bring up. And I don't know if you guys have looked at that again, but just to kind of help the foot traffic around the village and make it easier for them to find everything. And anyway, thank you for listening, and if you need to ask me anything, let me know, but that's kind of what I was thinking about. I did send some examples, too, from different cities on some of the different directories and the way they present them. Thank you.
Okay, there are no other raised hands.
Thank you. So we'll close public comment, and, um, Rhonda, just to let you know, I did pass that to our city clerk who did pass those examples to the council. I don't know which council members were able to see them, because it came at a very late hour, because I got delayed at school, so, uh, my apologies to you, Rhonda. Um, so, let's bring this back to the council, and, um, since since I'm the one that brought this forward, or, or really just reminded that we had asked for this for a while, the, the question is, what is the scope? And given how many signs I don't ever recall seeing, and I live in the village, I didn't realize we had this much of, I don't want to say a sign problem, but it is a problem if we can't see them. So this is a bigger problem than I thought it was. So I'm looking forward to hearing from the council and what the council thinks. So I, I do have opinions about this, but, um, I don't, I don't know if it's appropriate for, I, I kind of want to hear what everybody else wants to. So do you want me to go first?
No, fine.
Okay, uh, uh, so I'm looking for, very much forward to hearing what Councilmember Barnich has to say, because she's a designer. So, and she has so much experience on A R C, so I feel like she's gonna have great input. But, um, I'm, I'm really sorry, Mr. Downing, but that P sign is complicated by its busy top and makes it even harder to read. So I feel like at the very least, we need parking wayfinding. Without, to me, without a doubt, we need parking wayfinding. That was my original intent. I wasn't really looking at the monument signs, but now that I see them, and I see how different they all are, and some of them are easy to read, and some of them are hard to read, I do think at least having a program for what they're gonna look like in the future is maybe a good idea. I love the idea of changing the one at the entrance to the village. I don't love the idea of making that one about parking, that's a monument sign. So I, I, maybe I wasn't using the hierarchy of sign that the member of the public said, but I feel like that's more of a, here's where you are, and then we can, once you're in there, we can direct you to parking. Um, I gotta be honest, I don't like the teal. So I'm looking, I, I don't know if anybody is even interested in changing that color. We don't even have to pay for a new sign to change the color, but the teal disappears. And it always has, and I don't, maybe it's because those signs are so low to the ground, so if we do those monuments and pull them up, maybe that's why I'm not seeing them. But teal isn't a color I've ever seen on a sign that's trying to get the attention of somebody who's moving. So I'm open to the whole thing. I would like to see it unified. I would like to see our monument signs be ones that announce where you are and what big thing you're looking at, and then our parking signs directing to parking and being in places that announce parking before you get there. Uh, as an example, the ones on the point, assume you're already on the point. So, um, if you've made it that far, you're probably gonna find your way to parking, but I constantly hear people not tell me that they don't know that there's parking behind, uh, these city, uh, cha- council chambers, and there's almost always parking available up there. Um, so I don't know how deep the council wants to go. I am game for doing the whole thing. We just spent, in fact, I want to ask the question, Bill, how much did we spend on the, on the brick and all the tile and everything replacements around the village?
The crosswalks and the brick, uh, replacement of those bands, I think we're at about the half million dollar.
So doing some cohesive signage to give a major upgrade to the village, I think is, is money well spent. Um, I don't, I don't want to go halfway, it doesn't seem like a lot of money to me, so I'm excited about that. I know that the village purveyors would be excited about that. Um, and it would probably go a long way to kind of modernizing, and we're modernizing in a way that's gonna last fifty years. So why not do the full monty? That's the way I'm gonna, so, um, I don't know who might like to speak next. Okay, Councilor Seacrest.
Thank you. Um, so first of all, thank you so much for, obviously, all that work. That was a lot. And I also didn't realize how deep we were going on this. Um, but well done, I mean, it's, it's good to have the info, and I agree with the mayor. Um, you know, we just spent so much on the downtown sidewalks and everything, which looks great. It's nice to have signage that matches. Um, just jumping around a little bit, uh, can we take down something that says community center when there is no community center? Very basic. Um, at least to raise the signs and the monument signs high enough so that people can actually see them and use them. I'm actually okay with teal. I thought the Soto Sports, um, sign looked nice, but I'm, if everyone hates it, then I'm fine. Um, uh, I think sign uniformity, uh, would be a good thing, so especially the, the monument signs, and as has already been suggested. What are we looking at? What's the significance? And certainly raise it up if it's in front of a redwood. Um, so I guess all, there's a number of monument signs, so it would be nice to have those be uniform. Um, let's see, and I think the recommendation was, yes, making the, the sign at, um, Trafficway Intersection and Fireman's Park larger, and, um, sorry, jumping around, let's see. I think the very main thing is getting people where they, they need to go, and I know we started off with the businesses would appreciate, and, and I guess we'd all appreciate being able to see exactly where the free parking is, public parking, um, whatever you want to call it. Um, since we were asked, I, I did look at the shapes, and I see the suggestion for panel one. Um, I think it looks nice. I don't know if you would do that for parking, but the other signs. Um, I understand the point of, we really don't need a proprietary color, that sounds like that's a pain. Um, and cost prohibitive and just not practical. We'll keep with one of the other blues. Um, and I'm, I'm pretty open, so, thank you.
Thank you. The reason I was asking about scope is I just didn't know how far to share my thoughts. So, um, I'll just share my thoughts and, and we can go from there. I, I think that, um, I think at minimum, we need to develop some sort of a maintenance program for our signs. Whether we keep the signs we have, whether we just refresh them, whether we get new signs, they should be on an annual maintenance schedule, so that, you know, a lot of these monument signs are for people out of town coming in, and that's our, our face. That's what we're putting forth to our, our public and to our tourists and to our visitors. And we don't want our signs to be faded and cracked and dilapidated or crooked, or, you know, any of those things. So at minimum, we should develop some sort of a maintenance schedule. That being said, I agree with design consistency. I believe that as a council, we should understand and know what sign best practices are, uh, so that when we do put up signs, they are effective. Um, I don't necessarily want to just up and change what we currently have. In that, I believe that we need to do it in a more conscientious way. For me, as a designer, color means a lot, fonts mean a lot. Having a, a brand that we identify with means a lot. When we brand, we have guidelines, and those guidelines should be set by the city and should be consistent throughout the entire city. For signs, for documentation, for logos, for our website, whatever that is, we have, we decide on fonts, we decide on color, we decide on placement. You can't just bold Aurora Grande because you want to use bold that day. There's, there are guidelines that should be in place. And in order for us to do this, if we're going to take this on, I don't think it's going to be forty thousand dollars, and it shouldn't be forty thousand dollars if we plan to do it right. If we just want to refresh, that's different, I'm good with that. But I, I don't want to go full bore and say, hey, let's take on all the signage in the city. We're going through a general plan update right now. If we want to, we should consider including signage updates in the community outreach. That's something that, i- if, if it's really about the community, we're saying we want to modernize Aurora Grande. What does that mean? Modernizing has a lot of different meaning for a lot of different people. And so how modern do we want to go? What type of materials do we want to use? Materials make a huge difference in the presentation of a sign. So I don't want to, I, I, I don't think that, this wasn't on my radar. I think this is a much bigger, much bigger task than what we are, I mean, Shannon, your, your presentation proves it. All of those questions need to be answered, but they can't just be answered one at a time. They need to be answered holistically, and I think that our, our community needs input in that. Um, so for me, right now, what I thought we were looking at is wayfinding signs for parking, and maybe restrooms, maybe public facilities. Um, maybe we can look at updating those, whether it's blue or green. Again, I go back to what's best practices. What are people gonna see when they drive through our town? And the reason why a lot of times we don't see it is because we live here, and so we've been immune to it. So it's not us that, that makes determination, it's people that aren't familiar with our city coming in. We know where to turn left, we know where to turn right. People who are visiting may not, so they're the ones that are looking for the signs, and will they see the signs? So those are my initial thoughts. I have a lot more, but I think that, um, I'll just stop there for now. Thank you.
Councilor Barnich.
Thank you. Um, so incredible staff report. I mean, there's a ton of work that went into that with all the, um, shapes and the photos and all kind of highlighting where everything is, because we are sort of immune to it, we don't see it. I think we have too many signs. I think we have sign clutter. So, um, the, I think that if we do decide to move forward with any signs, I, I don't really think there's a problem with, um, I think that maybe there's a perception of some business owners that people don't know where to park. Um, I would say that it's not for lack of signage. So, um, if we do replace any signs eventually, or if we do that now, I think it should simply say parking with an arrow. I don't think it has to say free parking. I think it, people are gonna park whether it's, they don't know if it's free, they're still gonna go there and see. So, um, I really dislike the blue. Um, the, not the teal blue, but the bright blue. So if we do change, sorry, Matt, if we do change the parking signs to say something else, um, something that, like Lon is saying, it's, it needs to all sort of fit together with a theme, and there's no theme really. I mean, there's a little bit of a theme with the monument signs, and that was an effort in the past. And then, um, and then we just have a lot of other stuff going on. So I don't, I'm not really looking forward to spending a whole bunch of money and staff's time right now, and we have a lot of other things going on. Um, everybody's pretty busy with some pretty big projects. So, uh, I think minimally, I think that we should have a wayfinding sign for a restroom, because, um, I, I have heard that people that aren't from here have no clue where the restroom is, because it's off the beaten track. the beaten track just a little bit. So maybe a sign just right at the end of um Short Street right there where it's, where it's blocked off. And I think that would be helpful. Um. I don't love the teal either, but again, I think this could, this item could like take so much time, like hours and input and all these opinions on paint colors. I can see like days or months. And so I'm just sort of afraid it might grow and I don't know if now's the right time for it. Um. But, so I, I guess I would say I do think we need a restroom wayfinding sign for sure. And then if we really think that nobody knows where the parking is, if we're gonna spend money on parking, just have it say parking with an arrow. And in the future, maybe it's the general plan update, um. When we're bored, maybe we can take on. Uh, no, we can take on this. I just think this is a huge project that um could really grow and and so those are my initial comments. Thank you.
Mayor Purcell?
Well, first, I have absolutely no interest in what you're doing the logo. There's frankly, nothing more divisive than trying to come up with a logo except maybe mission statement. And and if we turn this over to the public, I mean, it, it, it personally could be a nightmare. I, I, this is the one thing where you know, maybe a committee too is really the answer uh at most. Um. That's it. I don't think we noticed the parking signs because we already know where parking is. As, as, as people who are down here a lot. Um, I, 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 I remember this was an issue back in two thousand fourteen, just before I, just before I left, there was a it just never quite took the next step. Kind of like finally somebody realized maybe how much real work it was. I'm not inclined to replace any, any sign unless it's damaged. Um, if we trying all the colors together would be great. I, I don't think anybody notices except, you know, uh. Whatever you call them, people do that kind of thing, uh, what, what the, what the font is, as long as it's readable. Um, I do agree that raising them would help. Um. I, I think all we really need to do if we're worried about the parking, it's really parking on this side of Branch Street. Everybody knows about Olahan Alley. It's directing people to this side of Branch Street, but it's really having the sign at the decision point. And the two decision points are Mason Street and then Nevada and, and, and Bridge Street. So if we're gonna put up public, that's all we need is the public parking sign at that point. A, a little bit bigger. I've, I've always thought if we painted on the side of Mason. Would, would really work well. But at any rate, once they've made the turn, the blue P signs work fine. I, I've always known it was for parking, by the way, just. Yeah, I'm, I'm gonna say being, being older, I, I would probably be on the other side of that. Um. So, so yeah, I, 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 I think, I, I do think adding a couple of signs there, particularly at Mason Street would, would help a lot. Maybe even a single sign. I'm not quite sure how you pull it off if you don't put it on, on, on the street bar, but uh directing people to the parking on this side is, is really the, the number one problem we can, um. Say replace damn jolly uh at parking Nevada. Oh, and taking down the, the, the community set size completely, it just makes sense to me. So those are my thoughts. Oh, so one last thing. I, I actually think this, this should not have come here first. That really should have gone. We have experts on, on the parking committee. People at least think they're experts. Uh, people on uh Architectural Review who do this all the time. Um, if we were really interested in wayfinding for more tourist oriented things like wineries and that kind of thing, we would want to go to TV. So I actually think we would see this put together pretty well. If it came through those committees first and then came to us last. I'm frankly, our our only input should be whether we're gonna do it at all based on staff time or whether we're gonna do it all based on money. So those are the two decisions I think we're will.
I think that's why we're here is staff's trying to figure out to what degree do we want to do that and then they'll figure out where to route it. So I, I'm, I, I understand why staff brought it to us. One thing that didn't come up in the uh in the PowerPoint but is in the staff report is the wooden signs that look like they're ripped on the side that are at the car corral. Um, those need to be bulldozed as well, along with the community center line ones.
Let's not, don't bulldoze those because those are cute and vintage. So I just don't throw them away. That's all I'm saying.
All right, we'll put them up, we'll give them to the historic.
Historical society, all take one.
Okay, okay. So, but I'm also looking on page well, for me, it's one hundred eleven of one thirty four. I can't tell what page of the staff report it is. It's, it's number two where this one pole has six signs on it. Could we just remove all of that? And leave the one that counts, which is the two hour parking sign? And, and I absolutely agree with Councilor Parnish that there are too many signs. And I totally agree with Councilmember Guthrie that what we really, really need is to pull people onto this side of Branch Street. That's the minimum. And that's what, in my head, when this was coming forward, it was parking wayfinding. It was, it was how do we get to where we need to be? Now, there is a larger question. I would not want to bring in the community and have a big community decision about that either. And I, when you were talking about fonts and things, Councilmember George. Um, I remember going through that with the TV and we have recognizable branding at the TV for tourists. And so perhaps that would be something in the future. But for right now, I would like to see us pair back what we have and find a way to get people to turn left on or, or I don't know if that's, I guess it's north, we'll call it north, on Nevada or north on Mason. And that's really what we need. And then when they got to the top of the hill, it needs to tell them where to go. And then rightfully, it needs to show them turn this way to get into the parking lot. And we have two or three entrances depending on where you're at. If, if we did that, that would really help route people away from Olahan Alley and into where we've got lots more parking. That's where my mind was. And if the council had an appetite to do a whole program, it sounds like they don't. That's okay with me. I don't want to say let's do it when we have time because there's no such thing. But I like the idea of waiting until after we have, maybe we're gonna be looking at our sign program as part of uh, the general plan update. So maybe that's a good time to look at that. Um, I would though. I do think the one at the traffic wave triangle okay, a close to Bank of America or Oopshari building does need updating. So I'm hoping that we can find a way to do that. So I don't know if that corralled enough for you or not. But I do think we need to change those peaks because even in terms of a parking peak, the whole point is that that's supposed to be simple. I would like to change that out to just say the word parking in an arrow. And if we can do that, buying them on Amazon for fifty bucks a piece that are aluminum, I'm fine. We don't need custom signage. We just need clear signage. And, and I don't think that would cost very much money. So I understand Councilmember Guthrie's frugality, but I, I would like to see those changed out.
Uh, I have a question. Can we put up the um, the map of where all the signs are, the color coded, three different colors?
Oh, thank you for that. I meant to acknowledge the, the um caller's directory idea. And um, she had an idea about putting business names on there. And that's, I, I don't know that that's really the purview of the council. That would be more a business district kind of thing to do that. But I have been in other historic districts that did have a centralized directory that said where the city facilities were, where the historic facilities were, where, you know. That, that could be something really cool, but that can be its own separate project, right? And, and I wonder if we might be able to partner with someone in the community to do something like that and as a gift or maybe I don't know what. So I don't think that would be part of this. This is more like I don't know if you call it critical point wayfinding. This is just get people parked so that they can come and shop rather than the bells and whistles. But I'd love to see the bells and whistles. I've seen it. Um, it's several, I, I actually photographed. In fact, I have a whole pile of photographs from downtown Lahaina from their signage program. And now that's all gone. That makes me so sad. But um, I have them everywhere. Every time I go, that's what I take pictures of is how are people finding their swinging bridge and their city hall and their historic house and all of that. So I would love to see that. And so Rhonda, if you're still on the line. I'd like to pursue that, but not as part of this program.
Uh, we might, as far as the directory, um, not, I'm not in favor of the businesses, but yes, the restroom, the swinging bridge. I think again, that'd be a great place would be Short Street, but maybe we could have a designed um student from Cal Poly design. I mean, I guess maybe it wouldn't be if we're gonna have a whole program, everything has to match. I just wondered if that was a way to have something that would save us some money. Um, okay, so but if we're talking about trying to get people up behind here, the council chambers. So I, I always see the sign at the top of Mason, but you're talking about, isn't there a parking sign that's right on the corner by Mason Bar?
It's just way up on the pole. So when I think it up.
It's on the traffic signal.
So you don't naturally see it at all.
Especially if it's coming the other direction. If you're coming east.
If you are coming east, the sign is across the street. And it's very easily lost and amongst everything else that's going on. Everybody's looking at our beautiful buildings. They don't see our signs.
Okay, so I guess, I guess that sign maybe is an issue, but I, but again, looking at all the blue parking signs, I feel like we have a lot of signs and especially when you go up Mason and then you turn left and then there's the parking lot and there's another sign there. So I'm just, I just don't, I'm sort of not sure really what we need to do right now.
Does the one in front of Klondikes, the blue one, I can't see the number from here. Is it fifteen maybe? Does that point towards Olahan Alley or towards Nevada? We could change that one to direct people towards Nevada. We don't need to direct people towards Olahan Alley. And that would solve that problem and it would be on the correct side of the street to have that happen.
Is it, uh, would it be appropriate for me to attempt to summarize? Might be the direction here. Uh, please correct me if I'm wrong and I okay, so the first thing is the sign at the redwood. I hear consensus that that sign could be bigger. That's taller, taller, um. Bigger pedestal, bigger sign. Uh, but that it should simply remain with welcome to the historic, it, it basically what it says. Don't put any other wayfinding on that sign. Item number two, change sign fifteen to point north and not south. Item number three, change all the ones that are in dark blue to teal? No, okay. Um, but don't leave them dark blue.
Only if we were replacing all of them. I don't know that I had consensus on that. Do we have consensus on, well, consensus minus Mr. Guthrie?
Well, if we're gonna replace them and you're going to try to replace them cost effectively, then you would almost certainly be going because that's the standard color. Um, and uh, I think what makes them distracting is, is shape. I think we were on to it. So if we were gonna replace, we'd replace them in my opinion, more for the shape and for the color, since it is the universal color. Everything else about it is is supposed to work.
Oh, look, vindication.
Okay, so anything other than a rectangle for our parking sign will be custom. So if you're already going custom to make them the shape of the monument signs, then changing their color is no big.
Then rectangle works for me.
Are they rounded corners or are they ninety degree corners?
I don't know. I haven't looked them up.
Yeah, I'm fine with a stock sign.
I don't know. I'm fine with the stock sign. I think it should stay the blue because when you go to other cities, that's what their parking signs are. It's just in Monterey. They're not the most attractive, but they are that, that shade of blue.
My question with the stock sign is, is we, we just said, we'll just go online and order stock signs. Um, there's different levels of quality of stock signs and we don't want to be replacing these in two years or three years because the color is peeling or the metal is warping because the stock sign that we purchased was really inexpensive. So I would just caution that when we buy signs and we just, you know, they may be stock, but just like good stock. And, and I, I wouldn't support making any major color changes. So again, I go to best practices. What, what is the color that that has been studied that people will actually see when they come into town?
It's that blue that Matt picked.
No, Matt picked the beautiful shape.
No, I think you picked the color.
Um, the matte blue.
Matte blue.
So I, I guess the other question is, can any of those signs be reconsidered? Like the same way we just reconsidered sign number fifteen, right? Is there a way to just maybe review all of the signs and see which sign can be reconsidered? Maybe we remove one sign, but then we add another sign somewhere else to accomplish the goal that the council is trying to accomplish.
Okay, uh, so.
Wait, I didn't understand that.
So we have fifteen signs.
Right.
Kristen's saying there's a lot of clutter, pretty much sign clutter. So what I'm saying is, do we need fifteen of the exact same signs? Just replace them or can we say we don't really need this sign?
Oh.
But in lieu of this sign, we'll put another sign here to direct people this way instead of that way. So I'm just asking staff to just maybe revisit the signs that are out there, not just for replacement, but for consideration.
So you're talking about possibly, you know, adjusting, relocating certain signs that are more appropriate in certain areas.
Correct.
Okay, and then if that doesn't work, my preference would be to just get a high quality outdoor. We, we know there's companies, we get emails from them in our city email of, you know, people that sell the, the high quality signs that are that are the blue, the matte blue that just say parking with an arrow. I'm sure that's probably pretty inexpensive option. And I'm sure a lot of cities purchase that. And that would just maybe tide us over. And I feel like we've done our duty until we can take on this whole other monster. Yeah.
So I think that was a long way to say not the fancy P.
Okay, that is fine. Thank you. Uh, question on process uh to Councilman Guthrie's point. What he brings up, you know, is this how much council, I don't know how you even asked the question. Um, I almost thought that this might become an iterative process. Uh, do you want this to come back to council once we refine this before it goes out to any of the other um stakeholders or is the next step to go to downtown parking?
I have a question for Mr. Downing on that, to that effect. If all we're saying is we're replacing the fancy P and that we might move one or two or we might change one or two to say north, not south. Do we need to go through that whole process or this is something that can be done through Public Works with the, with the advisory of the Downtown Parking Advisory Committee? All right, uh, everybody nodded when I said that, so I think we got the answer for that.
Okay, so um, we will I'm gonna, is, is it okay if I start over? Okay, uh, the redwood sign, bigger, taller. Okay, fifteen points north, not south. Uh, sign fifteen, all of our P signs are going to be square matte colored.
Sorry.
Um, as, as stock, high quality stock.
That say parking.
That say parking, parking with an arrow.
And maybe a P or no?
No, no P.
No.
Okay. It depends on what the stock says.
Yes.
It can say parking. It's just the ones we have where we've shoved another sign under that says free parking. We, we don't need to say free or not. We just need to say it just needs to be simple and parking. It has a P and it says parking under it. That's fine, but not like, like even that, it, that's not it. What's on the screen right now. It's too small. Yeah, there's no point in having words there if it's that small.
Okay, council is open to staff evaluating the locations of all of the parking signs and considering which ones might be cluttered as well as the extra signs that are at the entrance to the parking areas.
Yeah.
Okay. Um, we are not going to go any deeper into theme, design, anything along those lines. It is okay for us to remove the community center, um, both westbound and eastbound.
Can we leave it to staff to decide whether we should either remove or replace the ones in the car corral?
Yes, I meant, I mentally made a note of that.
Thank you. It's, it's, it's council, we council like for us to proceed with raising monument signs that are too large. Adding, at making a taller brick pedestal.
Sounds expensive. That's what my husband always says. That sounds expensive.
Well, I, I think, I thought there was consensus for the one sign.
The redwood sign?
All right, I would like to see them raised because it's gonna give the illusion that we have all new signage and we haven't done that. But do we have to do new pedestals to do that or can we just have higher? What, I don't know what those things are.
Posts.
Yeah, posts.
We, we can, we could put new posts, um, although several of them are in pretty bad shape. It's just as far as weathering and cracking, uh, as Shannon said, so, um, some, we will raise the, use this, the pedestal. Have a higher post and have a new sign, uh, in the interior. If needed.
I'd like to not have junky signs in the village, but I mean.
Question?
Now we're, now we're bleeding over to where Councilor George didn't want to go.
Yeah. Isn't there a small, very short monument sign that says parking? Isn't it right?
Yes, there's one in front of Parkwell. It says public parking.
Yeah, I guess that's what I was thinking of in terms of raising, that'd be the primary one I would think of raising for more visibility. But I don't, I understand we don't want to get into too far.
Okay, I could go with that one. Could we go with that one, Councilor George? So not a redesign, but just because it's part of the parking stuff?
Okay.
Are we placing signs? Are we doing it like for like? I mean, if it's got this font.
Uh, you're, on that one, does it need to be replaced?
He, he's saying several will need to be.
No, but we weren't talking about the others.
That one, just, I, I mean, like you don't even see it. It's so low.
No, if, uh, uh, and given, um, what I've heard, it sounds like, um. And correct me if I'm wrong, council would be fine with us replacing like for like at this point in time. Monument signs.
There's confusion.
Seven, we have seven monument signs. Of the seven signs, how many of them would need a full replacement?
Uh, probably four at this point.
And do we know what that would cost to replace one of those signs and make it taller, whether it's increasing the brick or making higher posts?
If we, well, if we increase the brick, it's gonna be significant. It'll be not significant, but it'll be thousands of dollars more. Uh, when we do one sign, uh, for example, the city hall sign, uh, that was about three thousand five hundred dollars to do that sign.
So to replace seven monument signs, not making changes, just replacing them and making them taller would be roughly twenty one thousand dollars.
Yeah, approximately that.
So we would not necessarily, other than the one at the entrance to the village. We don't have to replace the brick. We can just make those, the, the posts taller, right? And that keeps that cost way down.
That's the three thousand dollars.
Right, okay.
Okay.
Can I just clarify? I was just talking about the one sign by the part, the parking corral, but you're saying we would have to replace all of them to keep it.
So I think there's confusion up here.
There's two things going on. It's to help me if some signs need to be replaced, maybe four.
Because they are falling apart.
Because they're falling apart, not replaced because they're too short or and then they're falling apart. There are three other signs that would be every, ev- every one of them would then be new. And maybe they would all be, now be the same color and the same, in the same font. If you're gonna redo them, then why not? Then why not? And then once we, why not? I personally, I think we could just leave it to architectural review to pick one, but these people feel different.
So I would support replacing the wooden monument signs so that they're all consistent with the. One that's mostly faded, I guess. And if that means we don't have to replace three signs because they're good, we just can replace the other four and they'll match, then great. But if we need to replace all, I would support that, raise them higher, um, staying within that twenty thousand, I, I, I would be good with that. Changing and then all the things that you said prior to the, the monument signs, I would support that.
Okay, uh, the other thing I heard pretty loud and clear was it'd be nice if we knew where our restrooms were. Um, and I heard some, uh, support for the idea of having a sign on the former short street at Branch Street. A wayfinding sign there that points to the swinging bridge, Olahan Alley, the restrooms. There's lots of things that that location can point to, very least the restrooms. But there's also lots of other stuff there, the gazebo.
I don't know if I am a restaurant and I want a bathroom sign right at my entrance to my restaurant. So I don't think I would support that, but it does need to go somewhere. And it hit me as we were all talking that. If we were to find a community partner who maybe wanted to help us with that kind of fancy directory kind of sign. Short Street would be a great place to put that and then we could put restrooms on there, but it's not just this sign that says, hey, there's a toilet over here. So that would be a really classy way to do that. And it's a natural place because in, in theory, we're putting a pedestrian park there at some point. So that makes some sense to have that there as well. Whoa, we're getting an echo.
Are you envisioning the idea of like when you're in a mall?
Shirley, I think it might be you.
It is.
We're sending staff to help you, Shirley. Right, don't dial nine one one. I haven't fallen. Sorry, those of you at home, we're having technical difficulties again. Brian, can you maybe step outside and we can finish this up? Thank you. Um, okay, so Shannon, um. Do, did, was that about clear as mud for you?
Yes, I do believe so. Uh, the only last question I had was the idea at Church Street. So instead of it being a monument sign like what's in front of Lightning Joe's, it's more along the lines of a monument sign, not even a monument sign. More like a word you might see at a mall. Where you're looking down at it.
I'm not talking about that being part of this program.
Okay, just go ahead and.
No.
Don't worry about that one at all.
No.
Okay.
Can I comment about the restroom sign?
Barnage, Seacrest.
Okay.
Seacrest Barnage.
I think it's really important to have a restroom sign where folks in cars can see it. So I don't know how that would work, but if it's in, if it's down by the gazebo or something, that people that are from out of town that are driving around and really need a restroom. Are gonna see it, so.
So I, I don't know, I don't, I, I, I agree. I think I'm always looking for the restroom where I'm, where I, you know, I'm, I'm unfamiliar. And I feel like that is a perfect place for it. It doesn't have to be gigantic, but it, it needs to be right there on branch and short. And I think it's okay if it's, maybe they'll get more business because people need to go to the restroom and then they'll come back and go to the restaurant.
Well, they're gonna have to find parking, so why don't we put it in Olahan Alley instead of right out there on the thoroughfare? Because that really is a crossing that is the center of our town. And so putting that sign right there is only gonna capture a pedestrian.
Right, that's what I think people are walking around and they, they especially don't want to go in and use a restroom in a business. And the businesses don't want them to. The businesses want them to go use the public restroom. I've been in the businesses where they say, oh, we, we don't have restroom, but it's down there. So I, I just think that's customer serving, but I'm not gonna, you know, die on that hill. Um, but I just wanted to make it clear that if, that we're not ordering any new, if we order any parking signs. Cause if you guys are moving them around, right, you go, oh, I think we're okay with, we have enough free parking signs. I just don't want to order any new P signs and I don't think we are.
No, okay, we are not, okay. Okay, so do you want me to leave off any idea of anything at Church Street at this point in time?
We aren't, or, wait, I'm confused. You're just confusing. I thought we just said to order P signs that were new, that had, were square.
I know, I thought, no, no, just parking with an arrow. No, no P.
Oh.
Just the word parking, which I think everyone understands more than the P, even though it's the universal sign.
Find out what stock is, so that.
Well, there'll be a free, there'll be a parking sign with an arrow. You can probably find ten thousand of those.
Do you wish for us to come back here before we go?
I wish for Mr. Downing to speak right now. Hold on, sorry Shannon.
So to summarize, um, we will be looking at the monument sign at the redwood at the, uh, trafficway and, uh, Branch Street. We will essentially get, now conceptually get rid of all of the parking P signs and reevaluate. Or using a standard rectangular sign that says parking with an arrow, where those should go. And make sure that we don't, hey, add more, but reduce the clutter as best we can. Um, and then what I heard was we will get a sign in Olahan Alley to alert pedestrians and cars in Olahan Alley. That there's a restroom there, but we will not put out one out on Branch Street. Because I do agree, um, I don't think driving through our village that we want a big sign that says restroom this way.
Uh, and the one thing I would add is that the parking just have a, uh. The orientation is to get people to park to on the north side of the village, because that's unknown part.
And I think that's fair. And then take a look at the monument signs, uh, particularly the one at the car corral to raise that up. Um, and then evaluate the others, but not, one of the things that I want to make sure that we don't run into is run into any sight distance issues. Because once you start putting them in the air, then they block visibility as well. So we will take a look at that. If there's anything that, uh, any one of those signs that's grossly deteriorated, we will look at replacing that one like for like and go from there.
And I do not need this to come back to us.
No.
The only, at this point, the only reason it would is if for some reason this project balloons beyond a hundred thousand dollars. Because that's the city manager's signing limit.
Sounds good. All right.
Thank you, Shannon.
Thank you.
Thank you very much for all that work, all those curves, all those signs, gosh. Okay, um. All right, that takes us to item twelve B. This is a study session on revisions to public art guidelines. Public art donation program in Arroyo Grande Municipal Code relating to murals.
Thank you. Uh, good evening, Mayor and council members. This item is a discussion of public art guidelines. Uh, my name is Brian Pedrati. I'm the community development director. So the purpose of this study session. Um, is to provide the city council with an opportunity to review and provide direction regarding potential amendments. To the Arroyo Grande Public Art Guidelines, the Public Art Donation Program and the Arroyo Grande Municipal Code. Um, in terms of the history, there in two thousand two, the city council approved an art in public places program. And in two thousand six, uh, an art donation program was also approved by the city council. In two thousand eleven, art in public places, uh, was renamed to the guidelines, the public art guidelines. And amended to apply to public art on private property. In two thousand twenty one, the guidelines were again amended to narrow the application to proposals on non-residentiality property. And changed the advisory board from the Slow County Arts Council to the Arroyo Grande, to Arroyo Grande Public Art. Uh, it also formed the public art panel. And then, um. In section sixteen point sixteen point two hundred of the Arroyo Grande Municipal Code establishes the process. For review and approval of murals, so we'll look at that as well. So the purpose, um, really of the amendments is to look at resolving internal inconsistency. And also looking at objective, uh, design criteria. And by addressing these to ultimately streamline the process and make it easier for public art to be put in Arroyo Grande. So the, um, existing guidelines, uh, state that public art projects shall be reviewed by the city council. With community input as part of a public hearing and ultimately approved by the public art. Uh, this, um, this creates some inefficiency, uh, as I said, as well as, um. It's rather cumbersome. Uh, staff's proposed revisions and consumption of BTK to the guidelines. Establish a streamlined application or review process for public art proposals, uh, without requiring a public hearing. And so the goal of this streamlined process is to promote and encourage, uh, public art in the city, uh, to maintain. Impartiality, the objective, the objectivity, provide, uh, a more clear guidance. So, um, the proposed process includes a, um. A process where an applicant, uh, submits to the community development director. Um, it's reviewed by the ARC, uh, the Architectural Review Committee. Um, who determine its compliance with some selection criteria. And then there's a recommendation to the director. And the director approves, uh, again, looking at the compliance, uh, of the selection criteria. And then this is, uh, appealable to the city council. So, um. In this, uh, process, uh, the intention is for AGPA, the Arroyo Grande Public Art. Uh, to still be involved, um, and continue to be a primary collaborator. With the city on public art, but in the role of the applicant rather than part of the formal review process. Also, uh, staff is looking at an update to the Arroyo Grande Municipal Code. Um, and right now, there's a, a whole section, uh, regarding mural permits. Um, that would need to be essentially removed. Um, what, what staff has recommended is that, um. These generally be, they apply more, they just kind of state they applied public art, they reference the public art guidelines. And the note copy is on file, the community development department and the city clerk. And so this amendment is, uh, it's an ordinance, so they need to go through the planning commission, uh, with a hearing and the appropriate, appropriate notice. And then they would also need a public hearing, uh, with city council to consider the amendment. And, um. Uh, in addition, the guidelines would require a public art application, um, which would include checklist of all the requirements, uh, to apply for public art. So the current selection criteria, uh, which are shown in the staff report. Uh, generally can be potentially subjective. Um, they also reference a historical period, um, term of century. And so, um, what staff has, um, tried to do here is to make them more objective. Um, to provide a little more clarity, uh, define about the evaluation of artistic excellence in particular. And, um, provide some language regarding productivity and seen defamatory content. Um, and so you'll see in the proposed selection criteria, the evaluation of artistic excellence has been, uh, expanded. Uh, to include some more specifics, um, about the artist's qualifications. Um, their record of previous collaboration with other agencies, uh, their experience working in the public realm, things like that. And so another, um, couple of areas, uh, of applicability where staff was hoping to pinpoint some direction from city council. Uh, are regarding the, um, village specific selection criteria. So these are intended to be applied citywide, but there may be some interest, uh, in having village specific public art criteria. Given the uniqueness and character of the village, uh, so, uh, we have put that in there as, uh, as area to highlight. And then also, um, the applicability of them to, um, certain kinds of property and how, how that's listed. So the current guidelines apply to non-residential property. certain kinds of property and how, how that's listed. So the current guidelines apply to non-residential property that faces the right of way or public property. Um, that's proved a little bit problematic, um, as we move forward figuring out what facing is. And so, uh, the proposal has changed to be visible from public, from, um, the public right of way or public property. So feedback from the city council will dictate the next steps. Um, this is a conducted study session. Um, we could have a, you know, preview of the process for public art, um, look at proposed selection criteria. Um, but we have a discussion about village specific selection criteria or not. And then, um, again, regarding the language regarding visible from a public right of way for public property. And so if moving forward, um, uh, the city council would like us to do revisions, then we could have a legal review of all those proposed revisions, uh, the regular ordinance improvement process, uh, at planning, planning commission recommendation and then back to city council uh, for approval. And so staff's recommendation is to conduct a study session on potential amendments to the guidelines, public art donation program and the code, uh, with respect to public art and provide direction on the potential amendments.
All right, thank you.
Yes.
Councilmember George, any questions?
Just had a question that just popped up right now, so I apologize for not asking it earlier. If our guidelines are objective, is there any liability, uh, in relation to free speech?
I think there will always be sort of a balancing test between, um, the city's right to sort of, to Mr. Pedrati's point, to sort of regulate what's visible from the public right of way, um, against First Amendment concerns. So, uh, it's, it's common for many cities to have similar selection criteria as, uh, staff is recommending this evening, uh, even if it's not sort of a uh, perfect fit in terms of, um, reducing all sort of claims about free speech or, or First Amendment considerations.
Okay, thank you for that. Uh, my second question is, um, more for staff just to consider. When we select our architectural review, um, committee members, we select them because some of us are returning council members, some of us are new council members. Uh, if, if it's a new council member who may not have as much experience or know enough people in the community, they rely on the one to five, maybe, but likely six to seven applicants that have applied for that position and they pick from from there. So the pool from which, uh, the expertise is being chosen isn't as great as as I would hope it would be sometimes. And my concern there is if we're only really relying on the ARC to make the decision on a giant mural. Um, is that enough? So is there a, is there a size? Is there a way for us to limit ministerial decisions based on size? And if it's like really big, then it needs another step or just something to consider. I, I'm just concerned about, um, just the ARC and going to the community development director. But maybe that's why you're saying we have the objective guideline. So just a question.
Uh, I do think Councilmember George, the council does have sort of policy discretion to sort of set the, the process and and, uh, whether that includes an additional step, uh, that's spelled out in terms of, uh, signage size, uh, I think, I think that's well within the council's purview.
Okay, those are all my questions right now. Thank you.
Hey, Councilmember Seacross.
Thank you. I just thought of one, um, after council person George. Um, so say there was a, a pro, art proposal and it went before the ARC. If they thought it was fine, we would never see it. Is that? It's not, there's not going to be an appeal. They could approve it and then we're done?
That's, that's correct. It would go to ARC, uh, under this, this draft, um, it would go to ARC for a review and go to the uh, community development director for final approval. It would only go to the city council on appeal. Okay.
I, I think it's, okay, no comments. Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Burnage, any questions? Uh, just two questions. So just piggybacking on Councilmember George's as far, uh, question about process. So I thought maybe I was understanding that we were sort of taking council out of the loop. But am I correct in thinking that we could add for a mural or a mural of a certain size, we could add it to be reported on the consent agenda on the council's agenda? Or not?
I think it rests with the, the council's direction. Uh, Councilmember Barnage, are you suggesting for sort of hypothetical that, uh, a mural of a certain size be approved by the CDD director and then come to the council on consent for essentially the council's?
Well, I guess, uh, I, I guess I'm thinking more a planning commission where you have, um, uh, you know, administrative approvals that are just sort of on the agendas to sort of keep everyone in the loop. I guess I share, I mean, uh, my uh, this is a question, um.
I might be able to help with this one by the time it gets to me.
Okay, um, so my other question is on page one hundred and twenty-five of the packet. There is, and you, you touched on this in the PowerPoint. Uh, you talk, uh, about a quote robust selection criteria. And I guess, let me, let me first just go to that. Okay, so I guess if this, this is in regards to council may be interested in applying more robust selection criteria for areas in the village. So that's what you touched on, Brian, is that council, uh, should weigh in on if we are interested in this citywide or if, if the village, there might be, um, so the robust, the robust, well, criteria selection, I don't remember the last one, robust selection criteria, that would be more for just because of the location. But it would be, you're kind of thinking if it was in the village, it might be have a little bit more scrutiny because it's a historic area. Is that what you're referring to?
That's correct. Yes, if, um, I, I think we were, uh, I was kind of saying also that the criteria themselves, um, that we put forward are a little more robust, we expanded them slightly. Um, while also, you know, removing some things that were problematic, I think from a First Amendment standpoint. But then, um, yes, if, if there was something more robust for the village or, you know, um, for instance, the, the selection criteria, number one, an identified relationship in the social, cultural and historic identity of the area. Maybe that doesn't apply citywide, but it does apply to the village. So maybe it's not an addition, but it's a subtraction.
Okay, okay. No, that makes sense. Okay, thank you for that clarification. But those are all my questions right now.
Mayor Procham Guthrie?
Yeah, so I'm, I'm following up on the appeal as well. So there was a suggestion that maybe the city council, it would be non-appealable to the city council. I wonder if that's even possible. There was a suggestion in a, in a letter to us that maybe we should take the city council out completely. When I'm wondering if that's even doable for a ministerial decision.
So, and yeah, let me, um, also say that we did receive, um, a letter from Arroyo Grande Public Art with a number of, um, questions and, and items in there. Um, and, uh, the, the one particular point, uh, was regarding, as I said, the appeal process, um, and AGPA, um, indicated that it should be eliminated, um, the proposed, the current proposed guidelines allow community members to comment on projects prior to approval of the appeal process, especially when the project is placed on private property with delayed projects. Um, so I, I think that is, I think that's within the purview. I, I'm not sure if, um, Isaac would have a a little more information about whether or not appeal process should be.
Look, I, I just wondered, is it doable that we could have no appeal? I, I pretty much thought everything was a little less than council.
Uh, yes, uh, Mayor Protem, I believe the way it's set out in the staff recommendation seeking direction would be that the administrative process ends with the decision of the community development director. However, that decision would be appealable to the city council based on those same sele, selection criteria that ARC would look at and then that the CDD director would consider in deciding whether or not to approve or deny the application. I think in terms of an appeal, you're correct. Most processes do set forth an appeal period that often goes to city council as the main legislative body and, and that provides an opportunity to to have one last level of administrative review of the underlying decision.
Okay. And then, and who, who would appeal it? I'll be, I'm gonna say obviously if the, the person who wanted to do the art got denied, that would be an actual, but who, who, who would be in a position to appeal it, uh, other than, than the artist for lack of?
Uh, the way it's written, um, the artist, the city council, uh, would be able to appeal it, uh, to themselves. Okay, um. And then, um, I believe a member of the, of the, I mean, the way it was written, a member of the public within
A member of the public who just know about it and, and appeal it. Okay, that, I, I just checking out the and we have, at the planning commission, we have where all of the, uh, so I don't know if all of the directors', uh, decisions, but many of the directors' decisions come to the planning commission. They're not in effect until there's been a planning commission meeting and, and they're, that the possibility. Um, but we have a similar deal that maybe comes directly to council instead of putting on a consent agenda and actually having us make a decision that maybe we don't, don't need to make, that, uh, that it would just be, we're informed. And if we wanted to appeal it, then we could appeal it. Is, is that doable?
Um, I, I would think it's doable. It's, it's a, it's a report out, like, like you said, in the planning commission of all the uh, community development director decisions. And so this would be specific to public art. Um, I don't believe we have any other, um, any other dir, decisions like that, but we could make that specific, uh, report out really. And then, um, and then yes, uh, following that, there could be a time period at which someone could appeal it now that they know about, and they know that, or the city council could appeal it themselves.
In, in, in another piece of their letter, and that may be misremembering this, um, so they also suggest about having a quote art jury, I believe they called it, where sort of on an ad hoc basis, this is the way I interpret this, that we would select a, this is speaking to the problem of the expertise maybe on art specifically, that we would have an ad hoc committee. And I just wondered what you guys thought of that, um, it almost was just back to where we were, I think, but I, I just, it, 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 it is something appealing about having somebody who has some expertise. On, on the other hand, we, we, we're kind of begging for them may, maybe not to have the same, uh, public perspective that other people would.
Right, uh, we do have, um, sort of two approval bodies in the existing guidelines, um, again, they're inconsistent with each other. Um, the intention was to streamline the process, um, and that's why, um, you know, with an already existing body, uh, the ARC accomplishes that. And so again, with the streamlining process, um, having another body with meetings, staff, minutes, things like that, that was kind of the intention behind that. But certainly, um, there could be another body, uh, specifically set up, uh, to review um, public art. Uh, we found that in other cities, they had a civic arts commission or a public arts commission or something like that. Um, it would just be an extra, an extra body.
So it'd be, so, so no, what you're talking about, there is a standing commission.
Some cities have a standing, have a standing commission. And then there's, I'm gonna guess some others have this art jury that was described there. Okay, I just wanted to get your thoughts on it. Thank you.
So Isaac, I'm gonna try and shed some light here by asking a question that I already know the answer to. So the reason we're here is because we used to have a process that allowed us to judge the art itself. And we were challenged by Arroyo Grande Public Art on this and that there was a First Amendment right to this. So putting in to process a subjective, uh, sorry, an objective process is the point here, right? And so you've already gone through this and and I, I'm asking you because Brian said this is going to be subject to legal review. I'm sure you reviewed this already. You've looked at this and said, what's in here is objective, not subjective. So it's not, oh, we like, I'm, I'm thinking back to a particular mural. It's, we don't like strawberries. That's not, that's not within the purview here. That's subjective. Is, is that the whole point that this becomes objective only?
Yes, with the caveat, I would say the, the standards that are being suggested have been vetted by our office are consistent with how other jurisdictions review public art. Uh, they're meant to provide more transparency to the applicant and to the city regarding the approval process. So I would say there is an intent, intent with these revised guidelines to try to create a more objective process to the extent the artist and the private property owner are more aware of what the specific selection criteria are. And those, uh, that the city is recommending or putting forward tonight for the council's consideration, um, are ones that have been in place in other jurisdictions. So it is still a review that, you know, isn't a hundred percent objective to the extent that we're reviewing sort of design and, and art, like, like many other things that the architectural review committee does and that the council sometimes does, uh, but they're meant to have a stronger basis and consistency with a, with how other jurisdictions are evaluating public art.
So, um, in terms of what's being recommended by staff about having ARC see it, so Brian, um, first of all, I didn't ask this question before because I didn't notice it and maybe I either missed it in the staff report or it was in your report here. You said that the intention here is not to have a public hearing, but then it's recommending an ARC review. That would be public, right?
Um, ARC meetings are not noticed, um, but yes, they are open to the public.
Okay.
But they are not, um, publicly, they are not noticed as public hearings.
Okay, got it. And then what specifically would ARC be looking at that they would need expert, expertise, artistic expertise for?
You mean in the selection criteria?
Uh huh. I'm, I'm concerned, I guess I'm asking that question because other council members asked about expertise of ARC versus expertise of someone who's volunteering on a art committee.
Yeah, I mean, the, so the, the application would include, um, that information and it would be up to the ARC to determine based on the selection criteria whether or not they met the, you know, these A through F evaluations of, of the artist's experience.
Just about the artist's experience?
No, it's well, it would be
The whole. I'm sorry, I'm not looking at what you're looking at. So it's not on the TV or anything, so.
Well, the ARC would look at all of the selection criteria. So they would look at, um, you know, if, if the council was comfortable with these, they would look at the social, cultural, historical identity of the area. And then the artistic excellence. And then those are the, there's a number of things regarding, um, as I said, the, you know, their experience working in the public realm. Um, the, um, the record of previous collaboration, what their, their education, training experience. And then there are other ones, um, appropriateness of scale, form and material. They talk about
I'm caught up with you now.
Okay.
Thank you. I just didn't know what you were looking at.
And Mayor, oh, yeah, sorry. Um, Mayor, I just wanted to piggyback off what, uh, Director Pedrati said regarding the ARC meetings because
uh, ARC meetings to, uh, Mr. Pedrati's point, they are still meetings that are Brown Act notice. So there is still an agenda that's posted. Um, and there's a public process and there's staff support to hold those meetings consistent with the Brown Act, even if the applications themselves may not be noticed like a public hearing in the fact that, you know, something went out to the Tribune, but uh, staff and city certainly have discretion to sort of go above that floor under the Brown Act for, for hearings.
Thank you. And that is, and they are open to the public. Thank you. That's what I wanted to make sure I was hearing. Um. Okay, the rest I have are just comments. So unless there's other questions, I see your mic on. Sorry, no, okay. You can leave it on. I just want to make sure.
And just to, uh, clarify too, just because we were talking about public meetings, there is also a, um, um, a proposed requirement for a community meeting, um, that would be held by the applicant. Um, and really would just be a report out to, uh, the city, the ARC, uh, to say that they went out to the community and had a, a meeting, um, it doesn't need to be, um, again, a public hearing, but it needs to be, um, sort of just a community meeting, location, um, Be determined by the applicant. Um, we've had, you know, things like this, um. For certain street projects where there are community meetings at someone's house or in a driveway or something like that. Um, so that would be a requirement as well that they, that the applicant go out and perform a community meeting. Um, they wouldn't be held to the, uh, input necessarily, but it would be reported then out to the ARC and to the director.
Thank you. All right, let's go ahead and open up public comment at this time. So if you'd like to comment on this issue, please come forward. If you're gonna come up, come on up to the mic if you would. Just cause people at home won't be able to hear you.
It's my understanding that there is a member of the vice president of AGPA that would like to make a statement. So I would follow that, but I don't want to be the person who's saying I'm representing.
Got it. Okay, great. So let's go ahead and go online first.
If any members of the public on Zoom would like to make a comment, please raise your hand. And we do have a raised hand from Nan Bowman.
Okay, Nan, you are now allowed to speak.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes. We can hear you.
Hi, I'm not hearing any sound from you all.
Nan, can you hear me now? We can hear you.
Okay, it's my understanding that you can hear me. This is Nan Bowman, um, with Arroy Grande Public Art. And I just wanted to make a few comments related to the, um. The guidelines, I just sent letters, I think all of you are aware. First of all, I think it's really important that. The, uh, public art panel, and this is speaking from our organization, Arroy Grande Public Art. That the art panel not be dismantled. It does. Uh, serve a purpose in that it is made up of, uh. A wide range of people, but it also includes art, artists and public advocates for art. And I think at this point. Uh, if we do away with that, then the artists and the art community will have no say on. Projects that could go forward in the city. Um, we weren't necessarily suggesting that there be a jury formed like was in the letter. But just that you could see that the makeup of people usually working within our county for public art. In this selection process are, um. Are made up of a wide variety, but do include art organizations. And the other thing that I wanted to mention regarding that process. Was that the infrequency of applications was men, mentioned. In Brian Pedrati's original, um, paperwork for this meeting. And I just wanted to bring up that there we have three to four projects that were put on hold as far as the application process. Because we knew that there was going to be a new, um, new guideline. And I think at this point, we'll probably be moving forward with the application process on those. Because it looks, sounds like this process may take a little while. And then the other biggest concern was, in our, in our view, was the appeal process that won. And that may be something that we don't need to address at this time. I think at this point, that would be our main concern. Um. We do ask that when you do update the guidelines, that you provide a little more detail on some of the specifics. As far as what the community meeting needs to entail, how it needs to be posted. Also, um, just, uh, a list of terms in the application process. And that there be two separate applications, one for art that's going to be donated to the city and one for art on private buildings. Thank you. I'm sorry, I can't hear any of you, but I believe I'm finished at this point.
Nan, our, um, our tech said you may have your speakers muted, so you might want to check that. Okay, our next speaker is Laney. And Laney, you're able to speak.
I wonder if she can hear you telling her that.
Laney, you are able to speak. I'm asking her to unmute too.
Now, can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
Okay, uh, thank you. I, and, uh, my name's Lonnie Brisland. I have a business in the Village Branch Street Antiques. And you'll have to forgive me, I missed most of the meeting, so I'm coming in at the end. Um. I'm calling regarding the policy about the, um, tent signs on the street. Um.
One second, Laney, if you would.
Okay, sure.
I'm gonna let our city attorney jump in here.
Okay.
Uh, Ms. Brisland, so that item is already concluded. Uh, so the public comment for this portion of the meeting this evening is just related to public art.
Uh, okay, thank you.
Laney, if you would, um.
She's no longer online.
She jumped off?
Yeah.
Okay.
Um, there are no other raised hands.
I met with her earlier today, so I'm happy to have her email me any comments that she has and I'll forward those on to the council.
Great, thank you. I believe that's regarding the sandwich sign, so we, okay, great, thank you. All right, let's come back.
Sorry, we do have one that just popped up.
Okay.
Um, the next speaker is Jill Von Berg.
Jill Von Berg, you can hear me okay?
Yes, we can.
Yeah, first of all, I want to just say that Eric and I are both strong advocates for public art. And whatever you come up with in terms of the process, uh, we support it. Um, as the owners of the new gallery in town, there was one item I just wanted to raise and. I'm sure the city attorney will look at this piece, but I looked at the definition, um, that Brian has laid out here. In terms of what the definition of public art is. And it seems to me that it is being defined by location versus purpose and process. And I think that you should take a look at that. Currently, it says that, um, for the purpose of these guidelines. Public art is something that's located in these various places. And I think the generally accepted definition of public art is art that is. Created for the public consumption, but also has gone through a public process. And of course, that's what you're here to discuss tonight, but I wanted to just raise a voice to say. Before discussing the process, I think the definition of public art should also be made clear. That's all I had to say. Thank you.
Thank you. One last check. If anyone else on Zoom would like to make a comment, please raise your hand. Okay, there are no other raised hands.
Okay, and anyone live in the public now? Surely you want to come up now? For those of you at home, we, we can see our, our one public art person in the, it, it, it didn't take a brain surgeon to figure that one out.
Really? Oh. Well, as you know, I have pretty much worked through AGPA and I'm dealing with the Art Outside the Box project. The painting of the utility boxes. And just my personal comments, just from myself. Not representing everybody on the AGPA board would be. One, the application that you're recommending that's supposed to be generic to cover everyone. Would be almost impossible to fill out in relation to art on the boxes. It's a whole different. Game and a whole different process. The other part would be that I think. It would be really sad to have you completely remove. The Arroyo Grande Public Art Group from doing a portion of these projects. Being on the panel and helping to direct or make the decisions regarding the art. Because if the way you are projecting it right now with your guidelines, we are no longer part of the process. And therefore, I'm not even sure there's any purpose for Arroyo Grande Public Arts. So I would like you to really consider that and reconsider having someone. With that background as part of the process in some form, whether it's. Continuing an art panel or another art panel or some direction or even a. Have a person from AGPA as part of the other panel that you want to look at it. But just consider those things and that's just my personal opinion. Thank you.
Okay, anyone else?
I will close public comment, bring it back around to the council. Councilmember Vernich, would you like to kick us off?
Sure, thank you. Um, I am.
Oh, forgive me, forgive me. There were two questions. Sorry about that.
Okay.
Um, the first was the, uh, well, not the first, but the first one I wrote down was the, um. Vice President of AGPA asking about the two applications and that came up twice. So Brian, did you look at that as a possibility? As i- if it's on our property versus something else?
Um, we created one application with multiple checkbox marks that were, uh, check. Checkboxes that were, um, intended to cover all of those, but I think we can look at perhaps separating the two. Probably for clarity's sake. Um, it might be confusing if there's extra information that doesn't apply to one or the other.
Or is there a way to have a page two if it's something else? And so it's the same application, but you only fill out page one if it's this or page two if it's that?
Sure, sure. Yeah, I think that's certainly possible.
Okay. And then, um, the definition of lo, of public art, location versus purpose and process? Maybe, Isaac?
Uh, sure, Mayor. So there was a public commenter who, um, raised the idea of the, the definition of public art and mentioned that. Uh, generally, the accepted definition would include sort of, um, art as it's tied to process. And art for public consumption. Uh, the, the city suggested definition of public art. Is based on location, but it's based on the location by which the public can consume that art, whether it's on private property that's. Visible from the public right of way, um, or otherwise, uh, visible for public consumption because of its placement. Um, and, and the public commenter also mentioned, um. The process, I think the process is, is laid out within the, the guidelines itself.
Thank you very much. All right, forgive me, Councilmember Vernich?
Thank you. Um, so I'm more or less in agreement with staff's recommendations. Um, just a couple of notes and, um, like to hear what the rest of the council thinks, but as far as. I, I, I. My appointee on the ARC is someone that is well versed in colors and design and nuances with. Historic, um, areas, structures, et cetera. But of course, that could change overnight with, you know, the council, et cetera. So there's a small piece of me that. Would like something maybe depending on size to be reported on the consent agenda. Or a type of planning commission, what the planning commission does with the community development directors report outs, if you will. What are those called again? I'm blanking.
We just call them, uh, directors approvals, just, just report out on the planning commission agenda.
I thought there were, there's some name for them.
Thank you, notice of administrative decisions.
Okay, there we go. Um. And so I'm interested in if the rest of the council's interested in something like that. Um, I, I don't really want to muddy the waters too much and I, I do want to trust staff and the ARC, but if there's a. Hundred square foot mural in the historic village on the side of a historic building, I feel like that's maybe something that. We should maybe be able to just sort of approve without pulling it. Um, so I'm open to that. As far as different guidelines for the village versus, versus the rest of the city, initially, I thought, well. I'm all for modern art mixed in with historic structures. I think that's fine. But then I was intrigued by maybe subtracting one of those guidelines for the rest of the city. And making the historic part of it or the, the cultural, so maybe that specific to the village, because I do think. That if we didn't have some different art in the village, it could detract from the historic area just because it's not really. Um, it sort of focuses your eye away from the, you know, the historic. Nature of the village, so I'm open to that. Um, and then I would also encourage. Any members of the AGPA to apply for the architecture review committee, especially if they are artists. They are well versed in colors and, um, a sense of place, et cetera. And so we do always need members on the ARC and we are sometimes grasping at straws. So I would encourage if we do go that way to have, um, members that are interested in. Waying in on art in the village or any other projects to apply for the ARC.
Thank you. Councilmember George?
Thank you. It's really, really hard for me to see art as objective. It just, it's hard for me to say if art checks off these guidelines, then we're good to go. Uh, that being said, it's also hard for me when we're talking about a giant mural. Like, let's say the Century Twenty-One building here, that giant wall that, as you're coming. East, you know, there's a big side of the building. Let's say it's a giant mural there. It's hard for me to not. Want to take our time to look at it and to just streamline it. Um, I, I think when we talk about streamlining murals, it's not like, it's not like we get fifteen murals every year that we have, you know. It's easy just to kind of check off the boxes that we have. When was the last one we had a mural? I think we have three or four, right, too, like the past year that we're in contention. But I feel that streamlining. Uh, a decision for art is, it's really difficult for me to, to grasp that concept. Um, that being said, um, I, I respect and understand the need for a public process and. I would. It, it's tough for me to want to support that. Um, if I did support it, um, if that was a will of the council, I could find myself. Leaning more towards supporting it if we did have the notice of administrative decision. Uh, that would be huge because that would bring to light an item that maybe the council wasn't aware of. And that would give us the opportunity to appeal it. We just really felt it was not in the best interest of the, um, of the residents. I would support more clarity and expectation for those community develop, um, community meeting requirements. So whatever those requirements are that you're putting on the applicant, make sure that it's very clear that they know how to be. What, how the people, what area, how they need to report that out. Uh, so I think that those. Expectations should be very clear. I would support two applications for donated and private art. Um. Let me see what else. I would support a more robust, um, selection criteria for the village, just because we've been having a lot of discussions and. Just tonight, I think we spent like two hours on whether or not a blue pea or parking sign would be appropriate. And if we spent that much time on a parking sign, then why wouldn't we want to, um, make sure that the village stayed consistent? With the beautiful nature of what it is. So I would support a more robust. Um, selection criteria for the village. I definitely reserve the right for an appeal process, so absolutely no to getting rid of that. That is not even, um, a consideration for me. And I think that. Yeah, I think that those are, I, I just, I agree that, um, those applying for the ARC, if, if. If we do move forward with this, uh, AGPA highly recommend that you consider, uh, applying for the ARC. Think that having, having art be represented in our community is so, so important. And it's the little things that if you're not an artist, you don't understand. Um, I. Deal in that realm every day and. It, it's hard to understand unless you're doing it, but little things like do the letters connect right? Is there flow? How are the brushstrokes? There's so many, what is the intent? There's just so. Is there flow? How are the brushstrokes? There's so many, what is the intent? There's just so many intricate facets to art that I just, I caution us to just streamline it and, and look at it as another um, parking sign. Thank you.
Councilwoman Seacrest.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, I am very appreciative of the staff's work on this report. I think it's phenomenal. Um, I love art. I love public art. I'm all in favor of it. Um, I think because the definition that it's made for the public is really important. And hmm, I certainly, uh, I certainly would not be in favor of taking us away from the appeals process. Um, I felt like we, I was on the city council last year and I, when the big mural came through, um, it mostly took me by surprise, the size of it, the material, the, the whole, um, whole project itself. I had begun receiving calls and emails from constituents and just so happened there were three of us that had to deal with it that night. Um, so I'm very, very, um, pleased to see the new standards. I understand art is very subjective, of course. But if we had had these standards in place last year, I think it would have been much clearer to the applicant and it would have been much clearer to us. And, and something's always going to be subjective to a certain point, but when you're talking about experience, um, education, have they done public art before? How was it received? What was the process? Those were all things we were asking, at least I just talked to myself, was last year, like where was that process here? Um, so I think it's really important and I'm, I'm really enthused, that's not quite the right word, I'm really glad to see it. Um, I, I think public art especially is a very big deal. Um, so I'm excited to see it, but I think as other council, uh, folks have expressed, the bigger the project, I think, um, the more I would, I think we should all know about it and I think the, the more opportunities the public should have to know about it and also make comments. Um, it's their art, it's going to be their art. Um, so I would appreciate having the notice of administration and I don't know how we wanna term that and, you know, size or how that would look, but but a hundred feet would definitely be included in, in my book. Um, just, just for the record, my, uh, appointee, I am a new councilperson, but my appointee to ARC um, has many talents and one of them has been a national artist in residence at the national parks. So I would certainly, you know, trust her to reviewing art, but the point is well taken. Do people on ARC, are they? I, I don't know if you wanna have a, that's another very subjective thing, right? Who, who are we calling an artist? What are we calling art? But how do you meld that with the ARC? But I, I certainly, um, am very supportive of my appointee. Um, let's see. More robust criteria for the village. I understand that and it would, I would just submit on folks know, have a lot more history with the village than I do. Um, I know there can be some First Amendment, uh, concerns, but other than that, I would support that. Thank you.
Mayor Potem.
So, so first just a couple of questions, because things came up here. So one, is, is staff's proposal to have a community meeting? I'm, maybe I missed, misunderstood that. I thought that was a suggestion from AGPA. And by community meeting, it sounds to me something that is not, that, that the applicant has to do out in the neighborhood.
That's correct. That came from staff's recommendation.
Okay.
Um, it is, um, to hold at least one community meeting. And provide public notice of the meeting, um, and then documentation of the meeting with the application. And so then it's, and, and we identify that it would be advisory only and not binding to the applicant. Public notice, uh, is something that we can, uh, dig into a little bit with this type of meeting, but I, I think initially we envisioned that they, um, that we would have maybe an interested uh, parties list, uh, for email that they could blast out to, uh, for a community meeting such as this. So.
So, so, so different than a public, than a, gosh, that's leaving me.
Public hearing.
Uh, different than a public hearing.
Correct. We're having them hold a public hearing instead of us.
Public hearing on the sidewalk, essentially.
Right.
And, and, okay, I, I, I think the noticing for that would get, would get awkward, but, um, okay, if that's in staff proposal, because I, 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 I think that's a pretty high level of, we don't even require that of a, of a major project. And so now that we would be requiring it for this. I, I think we could probably handle this through better, just some really good noticing about the, at the architectural review, that, that we actually noticed the neighbors. You know, the immediate neighbors. I mean, if you're gonna be the guy who's looking at this mural every single day, you probably should have the opportunity to, to comment on it. We could notice AGPA or somebody like that, try, put together some sort of a list that is somehow easily updatable. And I, I think we could handle that through noticing and actually just have the one meeting, uh, to, to, to streamline it. I'm, I'm not in favor of, of doing away with the, with the appeal. I'm actually surprised we could. So I'm definitely, I, I do think rather than bringing it back on consent, I do think, uh, having some sort of notice specifically that, that the actual approval is delayed until it's, it's in these, you know, notice of directors, whatever it was called. That was very useful on planning commission. And, um, I actually believe at one point there was that the council was noticed on every single planning commission decision as well. At one time that was, that wa- that was a, a policy. Um, I, I don't see AGPA just because they're not in the review process going away, because they're often the applicant, but I think we have two or three of them. In fact, it's kind of a conflict of interest. If they're often the applicant and then the reviewer as well. So I did, I, I, I did see that. I, I think there's, and the, the reason I asked about the architectural review, there, there's actually a number of references to specific, is the artist qualified? I, I, I wouldn't want to, you know, I mean, if I had to, of course, I would make that decision, but I'm no, I have no expertise or, and, and I think I could be on architectural review. So I, I, I have a feeling that, that, I, again, I think we can handle that with noticing, but I, I am concerned about that. And I'm absolutely interested in having something specific for the village, whether that's done by subtraction to make it to, to make it kosher, that's, that's fine with me, but I think all of the problems we're gonna have with art are gonna be in the village, because most of them are going to be in the village. And, and the ones outside of the village will, will have far less trouble with. So those are my comments.
And I have to admit that the community meeting aspect of this caught me by surprise. I cannot find it in the staff report. And so I don't feel like I missed it, except for that I didn't go through the guidelines line by line, because I expected the highlight changes to be in the staff report. So I have not really looked at that, but what I do think is if we want the public to see this, then we need to handle that. And if we don't, then we don't. So I don't, I, I hate to say this, but I don't think I'm in favor of doing that. That just creates more things that we have to figure out if they did. And then we get skewered for not having the community know because we put it on somebody else to do it. So we're either saying, like we said in the staff report, that we're eliminating the public hearing, or we're not eliminating the public hearing. So I would like to see that stricken. Um, I have the same response as Mayor Potem about the, um, public art panel and the conflict of interest. I brought that up before. Um, because if the applicant, if the applicant is also on the panel, they should have to recuse. It should be very simple. So I don't know that that really needs to happen. What I do think in ter- I'm, so I should start by saying I'm, I'm comfortable with most of what staff has recommended here. What the ARC is really good at doing is knowing what fits here in the village. And so we don't really have the ability to say, nah, I don't like that one. You have to have findings for that. And they, they're accustomed to finding findings on whether or not it meets or does not meet our code. So if our code is clear, which I feel like this is really cleaning it up, I do trust ARC to do that. They're not judging whether or not this is museum quality art or not. That's, it, it's, it's not a judging of that type. It's judging as to whether or not it meets our code. And so I feel actually more comfortable with ARC doing that than I do with a public art panel. Because a public art panel has a vested interest in art itself rather than our code. So, I would, I liked the idea of two applications. I know just because I know Shirley so well, the heck she went through in trying to fill out our current application in terms of making it applied to on public property. So I do think that that needs to be reworked. Whether that needs to be two different applications or an agenda to an application or so that we don't go through our I don't remember how many things are on it, but let's call it twenty things and then have lines three, seven, nine, and twelve not applied to certain things. They need to be pulled apart and be a separate piece of that application. So I think we can, we can organize the application in a more meaningful way rather than having two. So that would be, that would be my recommendation, but the, the point that the, the AGPA is making is not lost on me. Um, the the proposal from staff does say that the council would be part of the appeal process, so I definitely want that. My, I, I hear what council members George and Barnet are saying in terms of the size of a mural, but my thought is perhaps we just need that. It comes as part of the enhanced village guidelines. Again, whether that's via addition or subtraction, but I, I, I'm open to either one, but if it's in the village, I wanna know about it. I don't really care if it's two by three or fifteen by fifteen. If it's in the village, I, I'm probably gonna take a good look at it. If it's elsewhere, there's just room for more freedom and more free rein. And, um, so if, if the will of the council is to have all of them reported here, because there aren't that many of them and it is interesting and allows us to know what's going on, I think that's great too. Or we can have that part of the enhanced village guidelines, but I am definitely in favor of having additional village guidelines. I think this is where we need fit. This is where we need form. This is where we need, um, those additional criteria to make sure that our character isn't lost, even though I agree with you, modern, modern across historic can sometimes be very well done, but again, that's quite subjective. And so, um, the streamlining of the murals in the code for me, um, I think we need, we obviously need to do that because there's conflict in the code. So I don't think we're really streamlining the process for a mural. It's more that we're saying it exists in two places in the code. So in the one place in the code, we're gonna refer to the other place so that they don't get lost. Because that's what happened with another mural a little bit further down on ground. So I'm certainly for doing that. Um, so the only real change I'd like to see here is the report, I guess I talked my way into reporting out on all of them to us. For, for, for an appeals process and that we get rid of the community meeting requirement. And I would also be in favor of the additional automatic noticing that Count, uh, Mayor Potem Guthrie was talking about, making sure that AGPA, if they're not an applicant, is automatically noticed as our uh, a certain radius as we normally do. Um, I think that's, that's all of my recommendations.
I have a, I have a question about the noticing part of it. If we, um, have some sort of noticing versus the community, um, I guess I'll call it sidewalk gathering. Um, ARC, do we notice radius? Yeah, I didn't think we did. So how do we? So I, I do think kind of killing two birds with one stone, whether it's through the notice of administrative decisions to the council. It's on the agenda. If, if you're interested in city business, then you're looking at the agenda. So that's, that, that kind of maybe satisfies that, gets it out there. Or ARC, but then I remembered that ARC isn't noticed. So what, what's staff's input on that? Either of those?
Well, I do want to address sort of, I think there's been a couple of common threads that, you know, we can, uh, that we've heard from council deliberations, we can talk about. Um, one thing I think it would be helpful to get clarity from the council on regarding the appeals process. So right now, uh, the appeal process is set up so that the decision of the community development director after the ARC hearing, uh, is appealable to council and anyone can appeal that. So a council member can appeal it, a, a member of the community. Regarding the decision of, of an administrative decision or having something on, uh, an agenda, one thought for the council's input might be whether, like other administrative, um, decisions by the director, it goes on the planning commission agenda. And then the council has the right to appeal it. I think I just want to ensure there's not a separate appeals process where the council sits as the appeal body on some applications and then other applications are brought forward to be confirmed on consent as part of an administrative decision.
So Isaac, I think the council's concern is how do we know about that? Because otherwise I have to look at every single planning commission from now until the cows come home, looking for an administrative decision. And that's what the council is trying to avoid.
Sure. And I do think there are ways that it can be provided to, you know, the, the the decision can be provided to the council. I, I think my concern is just to keep the ability of the council to appeal that decision separate from having it otherwise come automatically in certain instances to, to the city council.
So, and I appreciate that because that does muddy the waters to have only certain notice of administrative decisions highlighted or not. What about just putting it on the consent agenda? I mean, we don't have hundreds of these and so.
Uh, to that point, Councilmember Barnet, I think something like that could work and, and the council would have the same appeal rights as anyone else. So I think the appeal period would run through when that was placed on consent and the council can pull it and request it come back on an appeal of the administrative decision of, of the CDD director or someone else can request it.
So at the public hearing, when it's on the consent agenda, can it, could a council, obviously besides just appealing it, can a council member just pull it for discussion or no? It has to be actually appealed. And you have to.
No, we do need to hammer this out. Both myself and Mayor Potem are totally confused right now.
Both ways.
Right.
I mean, if we put it on the consent agenda, we've decided that there's no appeal. So boy, so, yeah, and, and so essentially that is the appeal and it's not actually decided by the director. It's just has gone to ARC and then it goes to council.
That's my concern, I would say, is that by placing it on the consent agenda and then having council discuss or deliberate or potentially change the decision that, that works as an appeal of, of the approval that the director's issue.
Okay, I'm, I'm gonna step in here and we've got Mr. Downey with his light on and I'd like to let him weigh in here because we're, we're making things more complicated right now, not less.
Right. And I think part of my concern is when we start putting in place processes and things that aren't kind of standard. So noticing ARC meetings, that's not something that we, that we normally do. So I have concerns about that because then when it's a time that somebody who's new forgets to do it, then it becomes a, an issue. Um, having a separate mechanism by which we notify the council, I, I understand the concern. I think we can look into that further and try and hammer out what that exact process looks like. Hopefully it fits in with the process that we already have, but if it doesn't, then maybe we do need to create a new process specifically for this type of thing. Uh, but where we can try and fit in with our kind of standard practices so that we don't miss these things. Um, back on the community, uh, the kind of community preview, that's not an uncommon, we don't require it on applications, but it's not uncommon for communities to strongly suggest to developers or others to get together with their neighborhood and get those people on board first. That's what I envision this to be for public art. Is make sure you're going out and talking to people and making sure that the community knows what's coming. But if the council isn't interested in that, then we don't have to require that. We can figure out something else.
Mayor Potem?
I, I was gonna say my, my, my concern is that really it sounded like it was a requirement.
Yes.
We, we encourage everybody to do this and certainly we would encourage them to do this as well. That's different than actually putting it in the ordinance that says you'll do.
And telling us how they did it, what they did.
And then, yeah, then we're, you know, yes, we, we would, that, that, we, we could, that, that would be something that, you know, that, that you would, could tell them that without this, it may be more difficult to get an approval. I, I, you know, but I, I, I don't want it to be required. That's all I'm saying. I don't want some, I don't want us judging their process. If, if, the other possibility, just move this up to the, to architectural review to the planning commission so that you can have it be, there's not that many, I'm saying you can have it actually be a publicly noticed process, just like, like any other. If, if that's what you want is consistency, then maybe it's something, architectural review reviews almost everything that goes to planning commission anyway first. Goes to planning commission, they make the ultimate decision with lots of input from architectural review. And then it's, and then it's there. It's there for us to review, just like any, any other decision. And it's, and most importantly, to me is I wanna be sure the guy sitting next door who's looking at this every single day got his, hid, his opportunity to comment. That's.
Councilwoman Seacrest is trying to get a word in edgewise.
May have just answered it, but I, I just, anything we can do within our ability and guidelines to let people know what's coming. We can do within our ability and guidelines to let people know what's coming. I think is really important. So maybe that's the same thing because I, because when I had calls and emails from constituents last year was right before the council meeting, they had just. Seen, you know, the, the slides, sorry, slides came through of here's the project and people were like, what? So anything to avoid that.
Well, and I think, um, I, I wasn't thinking about this until just now when I was saying, you know, Agpa should be a regular notice. They're on the notify me for anything art related or they should be. So we can certainly say that. If we post an agenda for A R C that's got public art on it that they're not aware of, they're going to get a notify me, right?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay, so I guess, I guess there's that, but I don't, I. My, my discomfort with having it reported out at planning commission is I don't monitor planning commission. They're my fire, fire and forget.
I want decided ultimately by planning.
I don't want it, I want it to come here because when it, when it, when, when, when something goes wrong, we're the ones who are going to get. Fried on that. I want that coming here. I mean, you and I clearly disagree on this.
And I'm just gonna say, I thought that one of the things we were trying to do was sort of take the council out of it unless absolutely necessary, that this is quote. Council politically controlling art and that we were trying to take ourselves as far out of it as possible. If. You know, if, if you feel the only way that you can have input is to have it come to us, then. Then, then that's what we'll have to deal with. I, I don't have a strong objection to that. I just think. We're failing. I, I don't think we're, we, we have better. Better criteria. But, uh. We're, we're back to this relatively complicated process to. If it's ultimately come to us is all I'm saying.
I, I. May, maybe. I don't know if this is. May, has staff heard enough input that's from the council and maybe staff could go back and. Figure out a. Different. I just don't know if. I feel like there's just some unanswered things that maybe we're not gonna, we're not happy with, but I don't, if we could sit here for a while trying to figure it out and all, you know, it's like awkward. So. Can, can staff kind of take another pass at it or is there enough direction or what do you guys think about that?
Well, it's gonna be an ordinance, so it's gonna have to come back to us.
No, I know that, but I mean. Even before it comes back, I'm just saying that I don't, I don't know if I can give much direction except what I've already said.
Just have one more comment. I think that, that a lot has been achieved by taking the art. Our community out, the art committee out of it comes, it goes to A R C and then it comes to us. That's. I think what got very confusing last year is like just these different methods and people got taken by surprise. Um.
Plus the criteria.
Right, so I do think that it's a big improvement from where we were. It's, but.
I didn't, I didn't perceive this process as making sure the council never saw anything. That's, that's not the way that I looked at it. The way I looked at it is we had a very, very subjective process. That allowed us to be very subjective and now we have findings we can make. It's much more dialed in. I am comfortable with coming to us.
And, and I'll just say my, my primary concern is that if it comes back on consent, there's no specific notice to the affected. If, if the effective parts. Whereas in some sort of a, it's, it's, you know, yes, I understand that. A G P A is going to be paying attention, although I think the only way they get noticed is if they get noticed about everything, but. There's lots and lots of businesses sitting, you know, particularly outside of the village who don't pay attention to us at all. And then one day there's going to be this, this, this mural that they. Had no notice of until we had already approved it and it was painted. That's my concern.
So, so if I may, counsel, um, what I'm hearing is that there is some. Concern about removing the council in its entirety from the process. I think what I'm also hearing is that a lot of the proposed, proposed amendments that are in front of you this evening are generally hitting the mark with. You know, and I'm seeing a lot of nodding heads, so, um, but I think if there's that concern. There is the opportunity to look at the existing process that we have in terms of bringing it to the council on a public hearing and sticking with that. With the refined and kind of more streamlined. Process overall, it clarified not having a, uh, internal inconsistency. So I believe. If that's the will of the council, we can absolutely continue to move forward in that regard and bring, bring it back to you. Uh, as an amendment.
That sounds good. And, and everyone's nodding that I see, even Mayor Procham.
The city attorney coming in with a.
With a bomb.
Yeah, yeah. So I think the only question I'm seeking clarity from the council on is. If the process returns to the council for final approval, that's different from an appeal of the. Community development director. So just to be clear, it would mean there wasn't an appeal. It's just that the council considers every application makes the final decision. Okay.
And.
And Mr. Downing got it right.
And for clarification from a selfish standpoint, um. I guess maybe I, I would want clarification on whether the director is sort of removed from the approval process, is it go A R C straight to city council instead of going to the director first?
What do you think, Mr. Downing?
From, from what I heard the council say, yes. The, the director would be the one bringing the item forward. However, it would be ultimately the council's decision.
You're welcome. Heat not on you, heat over you. All right, so you do not need a motion. You have direction, correct, from our study session? All right. All right, so. Um, so that concludes item twelve B. So reminding the public that we've moved item ten A to the end of the agenda. Item ten A is public hearing to consider introduction of an ordinance amending title sixteen of the Oregon municipal code regarding accessory dwelling units, and I'm going to kick over to our city attorney. Who, uh, can explain the process that we underwent last time in terms of drawing straws.
Uh, Mayor, actually, I believe we just have two recusals this evening, um, and have a quorum. Uh, so I believe we have two members, uh. That could announce on the record their recusal based on ownership of A D U's on their parcels. And then I don't believe we'll need to draw straws because I believe we have three, uh, council members that can, uh, listen to the item.
Excellent, thank you. So, um. I will go first and say that I have a, a conflict because I own an A D U, so I will be handing over the chairing of the remainder of the meeting to Mayor Potem.
And I also built an A D U of my property and so I will be accusing myself as well. Have a good evening.
So with that, I will announce that we will be moving on to. Item ten A, which is a public hearing, uh, to consider introduction of an ordinance amending title sixteen of Aurora Grandi Municipal Code. Regarding accessory dwelling units. This could be you, Andrew.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor Potem. I am Andrew Perez, City's Planning Manager, and this evening I'll be presenting. Um, the proposed ordinance amendments to the city's accessory dwelling unit ordinance. So as a little background, the city's A D O ordinance was last updated in September of twenty twenty-two. And the purpose of that update was to comply with state housing laws that were passed in twenty nineteen and twenty twenty. Among the significant. Changes at that time was for the elimination of lot size requirements for. A D U projects, uh, reductions of setbacks and parking requirements for A D U's. Uh, the creation of objective design standards and the prohibition of front yard A D U's in most circumstances. So in twenty twenty-two and twenty twenty-three, new housing bills were passed, the state legislature that affected A D O development. And therefore the ordinance is once again, um, needing to be updated to, um, remain compliant with state law. Uh, among the changes that are being. Proposed in the draft ordinance are changes to height limits for A D U's, uh, the removal, removal of water occupancy requirements. And allowance for certain A D U's in front setbacks. To implement these changes, the. Ordinance being presented this evening establishes a new permit type for certain A D U's. It revises the height limits for. A D U's dependent on the development on the lot. Um, in which A D U is proposed and amends development standards related to. Um, A D U's for setbacks, floor area ratio and lot coverage. The planning commission reviewed the draft ordinance at its meeting on January sixteenth of this year. The planning commission was, um, supportive of the ordinance and recommended that the council adopt the amendments with two slight changes to what was proposed to them. Uh, the first being an increase to the maximum height for, um, one class of A D U's. And additionally, an increase to the size that triggers the assessment of development impact fees. And we'll get into more detail on both of those later in the presentation. Uh, to state law requires that agencies approve four categories of A D U's with a building permit only. Um, those are A D U's that are created through the conversion of the existing space in a primary dwelling or accessory structure, multi-family lot. Uh, creation of a new A D U through, um, construction of a detached unit. With the A D U as less than eight hundred square feet. Um, additionally, A D U's created through the conversion of non-livable space and multi-family residence. And finally, up to two detached A D U's on. Multi-family residential lots where the height of the A D U's is eighteen feet or less. So these are what we consider building permit only A D U's. Um, and that. A D U's that do not fall within these four categories would be subject to an A D U permit. And really the purpose of the A D U permit is that it allows the city to impose additional development standards. Um, beyond some of the basic. Uh, standards for height and. Uh. Short-term rental prohibition with fire sprinklers are required, um, something like that. So. The A D U permit allows the city to impose maximum size limits. Objective design standards. And provisions for historic resource protection. So moving on to height. Do you change the state law? Height limits for A D U's are highly dependent on what is proposed or exists as the primary reasons on that property. So for example, a detached A D U on a multi-family residential property. Is limited to eighteen feet in height. Whereas in the A D U that's attached to a primary residence is limited to twenty-five feet. Uh, furthermore, a detached A D U, it's on a property. Located within one half mile of a major transit stop can be up to twenty feet. And so one height limit that did not change was, um, kind of our most popular category of A D U we see in the city. That detached A D U on a lot with a single family residence. Now, so state law does not change that height limit. Um, so that's sixteen feet are current ordinance. And that was, was proposed, uh, in the draft ordinance that was presented to the planning commission. However. Planning commission recommended increasing that to eighteen feet. Um, to align with the height limit for detached A D U on the multi-family residential property. And also provide some more design flexibility for applicants and designers looking to add A D U's on that property. Uh, look at setbacks, I thought it'd be beneficial to kind of compare the existing. Ordinance with what's proposed this evening. So the side and rear setbacks for A D U's that qualified as a by right A D U in our current ordinance were subject to four foot side and rear setbacks. Uh, whereas those that not qualify as by right were subject to setbacks of the underlying zoning district. Uh, for all A D U's regardless of by right or not in the current ordinance. Uh, A D U's would be prohibited in the front setback unless, um, no feasible alternative exists. And feasibility is determined by, uh, the presence of structures. Um, easements or severe slope in the backyard properties. Uh, looking at the proposed ordinance, which, um, presented this evening. Building permit only A D U's, so those in that four categories I listed earlier. Uh, would be allowed in the front setback and that's a mandate that comes directly from state law. The A D U's that are subject to an A D U permit would need to comply with the twenty-foot front setback. And then finally, a four-foot side, side and rear setback would apply to all A D U's across the board. So we're looking at making this change, staff. Kind of examined the applications we received in twenty twenty-three. And of those thirty-two applications, uh, only two. Of those would have, um. Needed to comply with setbacks that are greater than four feet based on our current order. So. Uh, that suggests the change. To having all A D U's comply with just a four-foot side and rear setback is, um, expected to be minimal. Again, with floor area ratio and lot coverage. Uh, our existing ordinance. Exempts by right A D U's from these two development standards, whereas. A D U's that did not qualify as by right. Would be subject to the standards of the underlying zoning district. Uh, in the draft ordinance proposed this evening. It eliminates floor area ratio and lot coverage as development standards that would apply to A D U's. The primary reason being that state law prohibits any development standard that could potentially limit. The size of an A D U to less than eight hundred square feet. Uh, again, looking at the application to receive last year, um, thirty of those thirty-two were eight hundred square feet or less. Uh, again, suggesting that. Um, elimination of these two development standards would not have a significant impact on the development patterns we see in A D U's. As far as this exercise and effort to update ordinance, staff also reexamined our objective sign standards. Um. It was, there were a handful that were identified as being potentially subjective, so those were either revised or deleted from the ordinance. Um, additional new. Objective design standards were added. Um. With the intent of preserving privacy and their root character. Uh, but it is important to note that only. A D U's that are subject to an A D U permit. Um. Would need to comply with these objective science standards and that's, um, a mandate from state law as well. Also worth noting that A D U's. Have been proposed to use the city's pre-designed plans or factory-built housing models would be exempt from complying with those. Objective science standards in hopes of encouraging use of those two. Um, methods to streamline A D U creation and development. Uh, moving on to historic resources. Um, provisions to protect historic resources is an optional provision that has been included for the council's consideration. Um. The draft ordinance says that. Properties that propose an A D U that are within five hundred feet of a property listed on the California Register of Historic Places. Um, shall locate that A D U in an open area that's not visible from the right way. And again, um. This provision would only apply to projects that need an A D U permit. And finally, the other area in which the planning commission recommended a change. Was to the trigger for development impact fees. Uh, state law prohibits a city from imposing development impact fees. Um, on A D U projects with A D U as less than seven hundred and fifty square feet. Uh, the planning commissioner recommended increasing that trigger to. Eight hundred square feet. Um, primarily to align with the, uh, one of the categories and the building permit only. A D U, that was. In hopes of, you know, minimizing the number of standards we have, hopefully. Making the ordinance easier to comprehend and implement for staff and the public. Uh, and so that's for. The council's consideration this evening. So look at the process, uh, tonight we are introducing the ordinance. Um, adoption would happen at the next meeting on the consent calendar if the council is supportive of the. Ordinance as proposed, uh, that significant changes are recommended, um, may require a reduction. And going through this process, uh, once more, but certainly an option of the council. Uh, once the ordinance is adopted, it becomes effective thirty days after the adoption date. And then within sixty days, the city will submit the, um, adopted ordinance to the State Department of Housing and Community Development. Uh, for certification, I'm just sure that it complies with state law. So in conclusion, uh, staff is recommending that council introduce the A D U ordinance. And determine that the adoption of the ordinance is statutorily exempt, uh, pursuant to section one, five, two, eight, two. Uh, H, uh, the, uh, sequel. So. That concludes my presentation. Have to answer any questions? So, you can, any questions?
Uh, just a few questions. Thank you, Andrew, for that staff report, um. The. Uh, I know.
Uh, I noticed that on Wazna Road, there is an A D U that's being built in the front yard. And so I am, I think, understanding correctly that it mu- it, it must meet certain criteria. And so is that because the house sits pretty far back? So I'm imagining there's no room behind it or there's a slope or something?
Yes, actually, both those factors are the case on that Wazna property.
Okay, um. And then I, I guess just two more questions. As far as the, the new ordinance. It limits the front yard A D U's unless they're twenty feet back from the property line. Um, I had a question just because there were a couple of properties that are in the village and they have huge front yards. And I was thinking about the setback, just for instance, on my street, which is still well-drived, which I think it's, it's pretty small. I think. I think I got the answer to that and it was like ten feet from the, from the. From the back of sidewalk to the front porch.
Yeah, so that tract is unique and that's a planned unit development. So there are specific front setback requirements that. Vary from our standard single-family setbacks, but.
Okay.
Um, in general, yeah, they're, they're pretty narrow.
Okay, um, so I guess it was just a question for the council. If we do want to encourage more A D U's, my house sits ten feet back. It's not a big deal to me. Um, I don't know if that was something I wanted to maybe limit or not limit, make more, um. What am I trying to say? Not as conservative as far as the setback, just something to think about. And then the other um question I have, I was encouraged to see that there was thirty-two A D U applications. I, I was really. I mean, I, I don't, I only see the one on Wazna, so I don't know where they all are, but I think that's amazing because I, it's affordable housing. Um, how are we, if we don't have the, or do we still have the enforcement, um consultant, whatever they were called? Um, how do we ensure these don't end up being short-term rentals?
So we do still have the short-term rental.
Okay.
Um, monitoring in place. So um every month. We get a report of new properties that are identified as having rentals that aren't permitted. So our staff is um cross-referencing. And ensure that they're not becoming short-term rentals.
Okay, and obviously when these people are building these and they're applying, they're aware of that, they're aware of that restriction. And then it would just be for the, the consultant to all of a sudden sort of connect. The new address to a new listing on a short-term rental site.
That's correct. And it often comes up in conversations with staff and an applicant at the counter before the application's even submitted. So. We try to make it um abundantly clear that your A D U cannot become short-term rental.
Okay, and just out of curiosity, these thirty-two, just generally, are they um for just. Uh, you know, a month of rental of a, someone that's just out in the community or is it um a lot of family members or aging parents? I was just sort of curious the makeup of those, if you know.
Um, I think just anecdotally, it's generally for family or for um a lot of folks to age in place.
Yeah, okay. Alright, great. Those are my only questions. Thank you.
So. Um, just clarification for me. The only two things we're doing that aren't required by the state are the eighteen that increased from sixteen to eighteen feet. For the roof line and the reduction in fees for up to eight hundred square feet. Are those the only things that we're changing tonight that weren't required by the state?
The addition of objective design standards, um, those are not required by the state. Uh, but it's something that was carried over from our previous A D U ordinance.
Oh, no, I, I mean that we're actually changing, that, that we're just.
In terms of changing the numerical standard, then yes.
Okay, and um on the uh. Pre-approved in what I'll call prefab, what if they're over eight hundred square feet? Do they then have to go through the A D U process? Are they in, I know. A D U approval?
Yes, they would be subject to that.
So, so it's not all, all, I assume all of our plans are under, under eight hundred square feet, but if there was a. Factory-built home coming in over eight hundred square feet, then it would be through the U.
That's correct.
Okay, um, and the five hundred foot rule from a historic building in the village, is that something that comes from the state or is that coming from us?
That was an internal decision.
Inside and terms. Okay, so those three things, okay. Um. And then, I know we talked about this a little bit. So when we have a pre-existing structure. How, how, how do we define pre-existing? Like, we had a constituent, we think we both talked to, who was concerned that. You could just build this thing today and then go into the city, build it on the property line, have the zero setback and then go to the city tomorrow and say, I have a pre-existing building. Um, had, did we have any kind of a definition in mind about what a pre-existing accessory building is?
I don't believe that we do. It, it's not included in the ordinance. Um, and one thing that's. Important to note about the A D U ordinance is that it stands on its own. It makes no references to. Any other sections of the Development Code or Municipal Code. So any terms related to A D ordinance, um, would need to be defined. In the ordinance itself. So with regards to an existing structure, um, it doesn't specify whether it was existing. You know, a year ago or ten years ago, but at the time that an application comes in to legalize it.
Okay. I'm certainly not going to hold this up tonight of that, but it is something that, that is out there. I mean, it was my understanding from this constituent. That, that there's something on our website that actually encourages it. I, I, I got that's what it actually says, but. Um, but it is something I, I would be concerned that, you know, it's very just people to go out and build an accessory. Building so that they can then turn it into an A D U. Um, but I'm, uh, that's. More of a comment than a question, but I, I did want to know if we'd have anything like that in mind yet.
Okay, and Mayor Potem, one more thing I wanted to add, when you asked about um areas in which the city's going, you know. Beyond state law, for lack of a better phrase, um, the twenty-foot front setback is not required by the state. It's something that was a policy decision for those A D U's that are subject to an A D U permit.
Oh, okay, so that is something that, but it's not as lessening our, our requirements. It's actually.
It is making them, you know, less permissive in certain sense, um, some circumstances.
And then, but longer, and so then your, your question about, so would you be talking about a zero setback? I mean, you have ten feet, so you.
No, I wouldn't be, I wouldn't put them in my front yard. I guess what I'm saying is I just, there's a couple of houses in the village that have giant front yards. And I just, I mean, they're huge and I, and, and I just wondered, you know, would it be, would we limit? Would we lessen this twenty-foot setback so that you could put an A D U in?
And, and then maybe make it a ten-foot setback. Doesn't, doesn't change their situation.
No, 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 not for me, but I'm saying, you know, I'm, I'm, that street is relatively, um, the houses are close to the street. And I, I don't think it's, um, you know, more of a boring thing. So I, I just, I, I hesitate just because I don't want. The character of all the neighborhoods to really change, but then I also grapple, you know, grapple with, well, but we need affordable housing. And so you have these huge lots, um, and so would that be something that, that we should not be so rigid on?
I can pop in just.
Sure.
Interject real quick. So I just wanted to clarify that, that building permit A D U's. Those are allowed in the front yard. It's only. Essentially detached units that are greater than eight hundred square feet.
Okay.
That'd be subject to the A D U permit.
Okay.
That would need to comply with that twenty-foot front setback.
Okay, so then.
Otherwise, they would be allowed in the front.
Okay, so the ones that don't need to comply, the ones that are larger than eight hundred square feet, those could be potentially ten feet. They could have a ten-foot setback.
That's correct.
Okay, alright, that's, that's great. Okay.
Okay. Alright, so with that, I'll open up for public hearing. There's no one here, so why don't we just go straight to online?
There are no members of the public online.
Okay, that makes it quick. So with that, I will open up to comment and possible action.
Yeah, seems like, thank you for your work. We've done a thorough job and we need to comply with state mandates, so. And I appreciate the discussion because I'm still looking, of course. Um, so I'm fine, I mean, I'm fine with it at this point. Thank you.
Uh, yes, I'm ready to move forward with staff's recommendation and the state's recommendations, you know, because we can't really do much about that. Uh, but I think it's working out. I think I, I love that we have thirty-two new A D U's and I think that's, I think that's amazing. I'm glad people are sort of. Putting, you know, doing the work to, to create that housing, whether it's for family members or other members of the community. So. Great to move forward and thank you for the um comprehensive staff report, Andrew.
And I too am in favor of moving forward. I'm trying to figure out how I'm going to read the title of an ordinance that has no title.
So Mayor Potem, I, I think what you could do instead um is read the actual recommendation into the record since the council waived. Um, uh, the reading of the title.
You want me to go, Tim?
Yeah.
Okay, I would uh move, uh, I would move forward with staff's recommendation and introduce an ordinance amending. Section sixteen point five two point one five zero of the Royal Grandy Municipal Code regarding the development of accessory dwelling units. And determine that the ordinance amendment is statutorily exempt per section one five two eight two H. Of the Sequo guidelines regarding projects involving the adoption of an ordinance regarding second units in a single-family or multifamily residential zone. By a city to implement government code section six five eight five two point two.
Second.
Good.
Better you than me. So I'm just, so if we could have a roll call, please.
Councilmember Barnage?
Yes, Mayor Person Guthrie.
Yes.
Councilmember Seacross.
Yes.
And, counsel, we will add that language to the top of that ordinance.
Okay. Just for once I had the right page, you know, you guys just, just playing with me. Alright. So with that, I think we're ready to adjourn.
Wait, are we? Hold on, let me get there.
Yeah, we did.
Oh yeah, we did a council communications. Wow, that was kind of anticlimactic. Okay. So.
So, oh, thank you, guys. I did think it was kind of.